How was that?
That was the people members coming down to protect their brother.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
What up?
How you doing?
A lot of people on board here. It's us.
Yeah.
We had a whole hand.
We lost.
Oops, we lost. Eh. Come on.
I know it's not right. I like having my own. I don't know what it is.
Yeah. I think it's psychological.
I think so.
The same reason why it is.
There's a little.
Yeah, yeah.
Little internal.
Yeah, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Certainly. In the end, it's gonna be. Hmm.
Yep.
Now, I looked at this just earlier.
We got a vote on the county habitat which is.
They won.
Oh, glad to forget.
Who's this?
I need to get out of bed.
This conference will now be recorded. Ready when you are.
I'm ready. Peter, you ready? Okay. Thank you for coming to our city council meeting November 15th. Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
All right, roll call.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Ballinger.
Here.
Councilmember Crummet.
Here.
Councilmember Swift.
Here.
Mayor Protem Legero.
Here.
And Mayor Alves.
Here. Okay. It looks to me we have no presentation, so it looks like we're gonna roll into the consent calendar. And these items are considered routine in nature and act upon a single action unless requested by an individual council member or a member of the public for special consideration. Do I have a motion?
Moved to accept the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and all those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Matters presented from the audience.
Alves, first staff communication.
Oh, did I pass something there? Hang on. No, they passed it down. Hang on, let me get this out of the way. There we go, sorry about that. Staff communication, staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you, we have the treasures report, the police department activity report, the animal control report, recreation department update, development services report, building department report, public works department report, water department report, and the wastewater treatment plant report, all for the month of October. If you have any questions, staff is available to answer.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen? Let's go out to the public here. Are there any questions regarding any of these items? If there is, you may come to the podium and give us what you have to say. And if not, we're gonna go to the online group now?
We have some staff communications.
Oh, you don't want to do this now? Okay.
We usually do them right now, and then you have item four.
Okay.
So, Justin, if you want to go first?
Yeah, definitely. I want to update everybody on the sidewalks as I came up a little bit last council. I think it was back in, I'm not sure, maybe it was summertime, we allocated fifteen thousand for the next three years for the trees going down McHenry, which consists of this first year where we were moving eighteen before the end of the budget season, and that is from BBVA down to Dollar General, and then we'll keep moving on. So between BBVA all the way down to the home across from the community center, every tree will be removed and filled with concrete on the sidewalk there. A few more updates that I do have is I want to update everybody on the PMI meter installation. Out of the twenty-five hundred approximately, they've completed seventeen hundred. We have about seven hundred left. The goal is the last week of November, if not the first week of December, that they'll be wrapped up and heading out of here. We have, out of the twenty-five hundred, came across maybe be fifty with issues as far as leaks, maybe the water forgot to get turned back on. There's always been something. PMI has been very great about going back and fixing the situation as soon as possible as far as our crew has. So if anybody out there has any issues, please contact us, and we will address them immediately. The slurry project started out extremely rough. It turned out a lot better. We still have a few items on the punch list to go over with them. They are in town this last weekend, a little bit today, and they will be back in Friday finishing the thermoplastics. We have to wait till they're done completely with their job, and it doesn't make sense. Then we go through the punch list, and then they make corrections, which I'd like to do it prior because it would save everybody time and money, but that's just not the way the contract's written out, and that's not the way it rolls. So we will address them. Also, solar tie-in for the wastewater treatment plant will happen tomorrow. We'll have a short three or four hour shutdown on our domestic out there, and we'll be able to get the solar tied in, start getting it all rolling out there, so we're really close with solar. And then one more is the rental house. We are in a major need of a roof. We've got leaks beyond leaks. It's a shake roof. We've had, I've gotten a few estimates, and the property manager's got some estimates. We obviously are gonna go with them because they're not government, and they can get way better rates than we can. We just want to bring it to your attention. Here real soon, I'm gonna have to come to you guys with some kind of approval on which way to move, what direction to go, whether we re-roof, or, well, I don't even want to say what at this point, but we'll come up with some ideas at that point, but I just want to bring it to your attention. I think that's it for public works.
I have a question for you. The tree removal on McHenry. You said it's from the bank all the way back here?
Yes, from next to Ace, all the way down to the community center.
Okay, when you're saying you're taking the trees out, you're just gonna put cement, no trees?
That's correct.
So we're gonna have no trees on McHenry?
On the sidewalks. There's lots of trees that are right behind sidewalks and stuff, so it won't be buried. But in the actual sidewalk, yes, there will be no trees.
Okay, so where these trees are, are they on city property or private property?
City property.
So will we have more put in when we remove those?
Let me take that back. Some are not on city property, some are on private property. That's why we came for approval, to allocate some money to do that. So that's why some of the ones on McHenry are getting taken care of by us city, because we approved the funds to do that.
And like at the shopping center?
Correct.
Those are the ones that will be on their property?
That's the ones that we did. And the same thing with even like in front of Ace and stuff, we working together with them and gonna be doing the project for them, but allocating some of the money on our half to do that to make the sidewalk safe.
Well, Schwab have any trees?
Yeah, almost every business. But what's nice is like, for instance, Schwab, we can go pop them out by hand, and it's a quick, easy one. Some in front of the high school, those are gonna be some chores. They're much bigger, doing a lot more damage.
Now, the tree selection this time, we're not gonna plant trees in a neighborhood.
We're not planting trees at all. They won't be lifting anything.
No trees anywhere?
No.
We're treeless.
That's the goal.
On sidewalks only. Not getting away from trees in general, though. My point being is that the trees you will be planting back.
That will be the right kind of root system for sidewalks.
So we've done our due diligence, not like the last time around?
We have. Between the landscapers that we're working with now, I would think the last four or five years, we've got the tree thing dialed in, which is just a matter of getting the bad ones out of here and getting the good ones in.
Okay, will they be evergreens, or will they be seasonal?
Mixture of both, depending on, there's a few trees we can choose from that will accommodate the root system.
Who will do the maintenance on those trees?
Yeah, well, it all depends. If city trees, the city will. If it's a homeowner tree, homeowner, business, it just all depends on who's.
So anybody who has a tree that's on their personal property, we're not responsible for the maintenance?
That is correct. All trees that are on residence property is residence responsibility.
Perfect. Any other questions, gentlemen?
I do.
Okay.
So I brought up the tree thing just because when I'm walking down past the high school, there's trees pushing up the sidewalk, and I'm glad to hear that they're being taken out. I like the look of trees. I think trees look better than just concrete, but for what they do and people's ability to travel down them, I just don't think it's a good policy to put trees in the sidewalks. That speaks to the larger issue of if a tree is planted in a sidewalk, it's the homeowner's responsibility, right? If it's in front of a residence, is that how that's written?
That's in accordance with the State of California highways code, roads and highways code.
That any landscaping in front of the house, even if it's in city sidewalks, is the homeowner's responsibility?
Any tree in the public right-of-way, which a lot of the trees are, our code more clearly defines it as within twenty feet of the sidewalk are considered street trees, which are in accordance with the State of California Caltrans regulations, owned by the city, but the ongoing liability and responsibility is to the property owner.
Okay, and that's my issue with this is, and I know this issue has come up in different ways over the past, and we've had different private property owners approach it differently. But to me, you know, somebody who's not in the know of what the code says, if there's a tree that is, you know, or something planted in the sidewalk, which is assumed to be a city-maintained space, and then that onus to maintain that falls on the property owner, I think there's just something wrong with that. I don't think that should be the policy. I mean, if you're saying it's a, I'm not sure why it's a state policy as opposed to just a city thing.
So let me retract, because when you were talking about that, I was thinking sidewalks when you're talking about trees. Sidewalks.
I'm talking about, yeah, trees and sidewalks.
Originally, you were talking about sidewalks, so the state has no regulation for the trees themselves.
Right.
But our municipal code claims trees within the first twenty feet of the sidewalk are the homeowner's responsibility.
Right.
Sidewalks, in accordance with State of California regulations, are the property owner's responsibility.
Okay. Yeah, and that's my thing, is I just think it can lead to more problems, because if a tree is causing a sidewalk to push up or break the concrete of the sidewalk, and then, you know, the city has to approach an individual private property owner and says, hey, you need to maintain this because that's the way it's written. I'm just gonna go on record saying I don't think it should be a residence responsibility to maintain a tree that's been planted in a sidewalk. I think if it's in the public right-of-way, it should be maintained by the city. I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Excuse me, gentlemen, is there anyone else to add comments this evening?
I've got a question. I don't know if it's for Dominique or Justin on this, but with the water meters, once they're implemented here in the next three, four weeks, whatever it might be, when are we gonna see those activated as far as being used for our water bills? Do we know an answer to that by check?
Actually, the ones that have been changed out now have been activated and are not being read. So if your meter's been changed out, chances are that is what's being read right now through the computer system.
Okay, so we're slowly phasing out the?
Yes, sir, that is correct. We are down to.
The employees that we designate to read.
For some reason, if PMI left today, we would have seven hundred meters out of the twenty-five hundred that we would have to read, but out of the twenty-five hundred, there's only seven hundred that's not being able to be read by the computer system.
Okay, so we're actively reading now for billing purposes and everything at this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, and along that line, so, because the reason we did this was to, basically a cost savings thing, an investment to save on the manpower it takes to read the meters. And so are we seeing those savings?
It's hard to say we're seeing those savings. You're getting more done, definitely, yeah, but we're still kind of reading the meters, so I can't tell that yet because we haven't had enough cycles to be able to accommodate that, because I'm still out physically reading meters.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more of this council, gentlemen? No, we're gonna move it back to everybody.
I just wanted to make sure, do you have any updates you wanted to provide, council?
The only thing I gotta provide is that we're working with Les Schwab to get the catalytic converters engraved.
Right.
We haven't got a date yet, so I'm still working with them to do that.
Everybody know what he's referring to? Maybe you can tell the audience what you're referring to. They weren't here at the last meeting.
So like, I believe around five years ago, six years ago, we got together with Les Schwab, because we have a lot of thefts of the catalytic converters back in that time, so now to come back again. During that period, we actually proposed that people go take their vehicles to Les Schwab and get their license plate engraved on the catalytic converter, just in case somebody stole it, and we've caught them with it. It can prove that it doesn't belong to their vehicle, belongs to the RO of that vehicle. So we're working on that, again, to do that this, hopefully, end of November, first week of December. Okay?
All right, thank you, Gus. Now can we go to the audience?
I have a few updates as well.
Well, then go right ahead.
I just wanted to update the council and everyone in the public that November 30th is our hospice tree lighting event.
November 30th?
November 30th at 5:30 PM. It's our annual tree of lights. Last year it was virtual. This year we're back to in-person outside. So yes, 5:30 PM, and we have some flyers out front by the door. If anybody wants to make a donation, the information's there. Also have some flyers just advertising the event, and we hope to see everybody there. Regarding senior housing, I have been in contact with RHF. We just completed a, kind of a rough survey on rental costs, or rental fees for senior housing in the area, and submitted that information over to their finance group to kind of take a look at it and figure out how they would qualify for types of housing, whether it's low-income, moderate, the mixed household income for seniors, and so we're working on that. And then just a reminder, we do have our monthly meeting with the school district this Thursday. It was originally scheduled for last Thursday, but because Veterans Day was a holiday, it was postponed until this Thursday at eight o'clock in the morning, and if you're interested in attending, myself and Justin will be present, and just let me know, and we can make accommodation for you or meet you there at the school district office. That's all I have at this time.
What about the 30th? What time do we meet down there?
The event doesn't start till 5:30. If you want to come around, excuse me, 4:30, maybe 4:45.
Okay, 4:30 is fine. All righty then.
And it'll be just like the years past, cookies, hot cocoa, some words, and then the lights.
Very good. Now may we go out to the audience?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow. Okay, anyone in the audience would like to comment on the previous agendized items? Now's your chance to come to the podium and give us your opinion if you'd like. You have five minutes. If not, we'll move back to those online. Whoops, we got someone right here. We have the supervisor from our district.
Mr. Mayor, council members. Good being here. Always learn something when I come to these meetings. The catalytic converter issue, I just had a conversation with the sheriff recently. They got a ton of them, but they can't give them back because they don't know where they go. Great idea. I'm here primarily because, as you're all aware, we're doing redistricting, both statewide, countywide, and we worked on the congressional districts, or districts, and the assembly districts, and the state senate district, and now we're working on the supervisory districts. And the reason I'm here tonight is because as of last Friday, there was a major change in regards to the District Four, District Five boundaries. And the reason I'm here is to just share with certainly the council and residents that there are currently two maps that'll be considered tomorrow at our board meeting, Map A and Map B, and then there's gonna be probably a third one presented in regards to the changes in the boundaries for the five supervisory districts. And the reason I bring this up is between Map A and Map B, there is a change, whereas in Map A, District Four, which is the district that I represent and obviously you're in, is pretty much the same, but in Map B, it changes back pretty much to the old way, if you remember that, when District Five used to cover Ripon and Tracy and those areas. In this particular iteration, it's Escalon, Ripon, Tracy that will be included. And District Five, instead of going north about to Lathrop, it'll go all the way up to Eight Mile Road. So it's quite a big swath, and that's the district that got the most population in the county. And so I brought these, and I'll give them to the clerk, and you can give them to the...
Manteca was on that other map, correct? With Escalon?
Manteca is, on both maps, Manteca is District Three.
But if they change it to Four, the other one, doesn't Manteca move into with Escalon?
No, what, well.
Let's see.
The way it's set up is that what they tried to do in the redistricting committee is they tried to keep cities whole.
Right.
And so, as you know, currently Manteca is split into two districts.
So is Escalon.
And so is Lathrop. And so what they did is they took District Three, and essentially they made it kind of a cylindrical lane, so to speak, and District Three would take all of Manteca, and essentially also Lathrop. And in Map B, if you look at that, it takes District Five all the way across the bottom of the South County, which would include Escalon, Ripon, Tracy, and all the way up north. So anyway, I bring this to your attention just for your information. If you want to comment on it, you can either comment at the meeting, which is at 1:30 on this particular issue, or you can do it online, or you can email me, and I'll be more than happy to read it at the board meeting itself. But again, it changes. As far as the assembly district, for example, the latest boundary change is that the district, assembly district that you'll be in will go as far south as Waterford. It'll go as far north as Sacramento. So you've got a rather large assembly district for the future. The second assembly district in San Joaquin County will pretty much be the west side, which will be like Tracy, Stockton, and that'll cover basically the other side of the San Joaquin County. So those are the two. And the senate district, which currently is pretty much the entire county, will remain the same. It's Senator Eggman. On the congressional side, the state redistricting committee has kind of been all over the place, and at one time we had about four different congressional districts in our county. Currently, we have two. And finally, they changed it, what we recommended from the county to the state is that they make a congressional district made up of the entire San Joaquin County, feeling the representation would be better served as opposed to being split, and getting the minority, I guess, population of those two districts, both nine and 10. The only thing, which is interesting, the only city that is not included in that congressional district is Ripon. So, but they're included south, so I guess that's fine, because Stanislaus wanted basically Ripon, Escalon, Lowdy included in whatever they had as far as congressional or assembly, so that worked out fine. So anyway, those are for your information. Again, our meeting's at 1:30. If you have anything to say, just be more than happy individually or as a board, but I think it would be important that you have some input, at least if you want that opportunity.
Which one of these do you think's most likely?
Well, you all know, and you've been on the council a long time, Ed, is that it's hard to predict the outcome of individuals that you serve with. I would offer this. I suspect based upon our conversation on our last board meeting, there's probably two supervisors that are pushing Map B. So that's all I can say, and how it comes out tomorrow, who knows? There's a lot of interest in regards to how this is redistrict. Primarily, I'll be honest with you, I've got about eight candidates running for my seat next year, so they're very interested in what the boundaries are gonna be, whether they actually live in the district or not. And so those are things that are being discussed as we, in fact, as an immediate London, I supposed to be in a meeting on a London night, yeah. Mayor?
Map B is not gonna be generous to a few of the candidates. It's gonna eliminate some of them.
It is.
And then on map, was it C, the last one?
Yeah.
C, yeah, and A, I see it was A. All right, so basically A and the last one, the two that would probably keep most of those people in the running, the other one's gonna take a few out.
Yeah, C will be proposed tomorrow. A and D are the current ones of record, so we'll discuss that or whatever. But again, it's just for information.
Thank you.
I thought it'd be important.
Is there any questions for our supervisor?
Yeah, I do. Chuck, what's a website that we can comment on this?
You can go on the county website, and probably for tomorrow, what I would suggest is go to the clerk of the board. She accepts all comments in regards to the discussion of the board itself, and...
Clerk of the board?
Yeah, clerk of the board.
Okay.
And in fact, if you go to the agenda for our meeting tomorrow on our website, it has directions on how you can participate online, and so that would probably be the best way to go.
How to participate online, okay.
And it's obviously, we zoom it also, so you can watch it livestream, which is always interesting.
Okay, well, okay, so yeah, we'll try our best to comment, but right from the get-go, and boy, I hope I'm not being too subtle on this, for me, Map B, that's a horrible idea. That's a horrible idea. So again, you know, that's just my own opinion, I'll let them know.
Well, just for some background, I think I already mentioned, is that District Five had the largest growth in the county. Obviously, we have a lot of people moving over here from the Bay Area, and all I would say is that the C, I guess you would call it, is probably closest to what we currently have. And I'll be honest with you, and it won't affect me, or I don't know, because legal is still trying to figure it out, but because I have my last year in '22, but for those who are gonna be serving past '22 into '23 and '24, the fact is, they may be representing people that never voted for them because of the changes that are made. And that's a hard thing to do, because, you know, you do have a lot of communication and relationships built over the years, and it's hard just to move somewhere else where they don't know you, you don't know them, and you lose a lot of people that you worked with in the past, so that's the important thing. So anyway, I thank you for the opportunity, and if you have any comments to the board, they would be appreciated, no matter what they are.
Supervisor Winn, have you talked to the Ripon city council about this yet?
Yes.
What was their response?
Let me put it this way, I was contacted, I've talked to the city administrator in the past, and I talked recently with one of the council members who contacted me, and I gave him basically the same information you have here. By the way, we miss you, Peter, on latte.
Thanks.
Always appreciate your comments.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
We have nothing in common with these ones.
I agree.
Oh, Lord.
Agreed. Did we allow for those on the line to comment? Did we? On the items, staff communication?
Yeah.
We did? Okay. Okay, good enough. All right, so now we're gonna have matters presented from the audience. Ready for this? Here we go.
I think it should be noted, Mr. Mayor, that the public should know, these matters presented from the audience are for comments, things not on the agenda. Things on the agenda would wait until public hearing.
That's why we read it to them.
Got it.
Okay? Here we go. Matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time of the item called. The public may also address the city on any item not on the agenda, that is, within the authority of the city council. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. Determination of whether an item is within the authority of the city council is discretionary decision made by the mayor. All right, public, the matters presented is now open for anyone who'd like to come up and give us what's on your mind. We will not comment on it, but we will listen. Herr Ballinger, 719 California Street. As a veteran and American Legion member personally and a group, would like to thank the city council, the city staff, working with us and always supporting us, and a special thank you to Justin, the way he cleaned up the area around the veterans who all out of community center. We do appreciate that. So thank you, guys. All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to come up at this time and make a comment? Would you like your name, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff. My name is Sean Strowman, Escalon, obviously, Yosemite Avenue. Over the course of the last two months, there's been a lot of talk about the skate park, and I have some points that I just want you to consider, and I'm not just looking at you, And I'm not just looking at you, I'm looking at city attorney, looking at Public Works Superintendent, because these are realities. The bottom line is, I think we need to remove the emotions about having a skate park because we've been talking about it since 2008, and look at the realities of a construction project today. First of all, we have to look at it once versus needs. I can tell you for certain that there is some confusion on what, which location is the skate park going to be at? Is it going to be downtown where the sign has been up that says, "Future home of Rail City Skate Park," or is it going to be at Hogan Park? No one knows. If we're going to do it this, the right way, there needs to be solicitation on skate park ideas from the community now, not telling the developer, "Oh, we have $300,000 in the budget. What can we get for $300,000?" Now I'm looking at you, sir. Mr. Justin, who's representing the city in these discussions? I mean, the minute that the city authorized $220,000 to be earmarked for that, who's representing the city? Justin doesn't have time to do that. I have no idea. What's the project schedule? As you can see, there are many questions. In my opinion, as a construction manager, $300,000 is not nearly enough for a skate park, no matter what the size, given all of the infrastructure requirements, and then everybody's friend, prevailing wage. Further, $300,000 in the total budget, what's the further breakdown, hard costs versus soft costs? $300,000 goes really quick when you start figuring, okay, there's a design fee, there's admin time, there's city staff time, so now you're talking about $200,000 for a skate park. Anybody anticipate unforeseen conditions? Has anybody performed a geotechnical review of both sites? I mean, your Public Works Superintendent can tell you the unsuitable soils that he found during the parking lot. Has anybody gone and put a drill rig on either of those sites, which is the best site? Please, please, please. This goes for city staff and the Escalon Parks Foundation. Do not tell the contractor you have $300,000 to spend. Please. Now, I have a question for Mark. How can you have a developer slash contractor slash designer without an RFP process, given the California public contract rules with now that the city is involved? I don't know. How long, and then this is for the city council, how long will it take to recoup the $220,000 that you're purging from the recreation budget? We don't know that. Does Public Works have money for maintenance and operation of this facility? I think there's some confusion for the mission of the Escalon Parks Foundation as well. In their 501(c)(3) documents, they state that their mission is to aid, sponsor, promote, advance, and assist in the provision, development, and maintenance of public works and recreation services in the city of Escalon, providing, by providing support to the city as such purposes, with particular emphasis on facilitating the construction, maintenance, and operation of public skate park by the city. Well, that first part, it sounds like there's a whole bunch of other stuff that needs to be done at public parks, but what have they done for all the other 13 parks in the city since their inception in 2008? Everybody knows that the $80,000 was raised, but was any of that $80,000?
You have 10 seconds.
Okay. In a nutshell, Oakdale's, River, Oakdale's Skate Park cost $4 million.
That's time.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, do we have someone else who'd like this evening to come up and speak on any particular item? Okay. Since no one's coming up, we're going to go to those online. Is there anyone online who'd like to comment? And hearing no requests, we're going to end this. Matters presented from the audience. All right, now we're going to move on to the public hearings. Consider of adopting resolution number 21, approving the 2022 San Joaquin County Multiple Species Habitat Conservation and Open Space Plan adjusted fee schedule.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you. This item comes before the council annually, as this group reevaluates the fees annually in accordance with their financial analysis models. So back in February of 2001, the Escalon City Council agreed to participate jointly and collectively with the San Joaquin County and its incorporated cities to extend the neighboring land protection program in perpetuity by passing resolution 09-01, which adopt the San Joaquin County Multi-Species Habitat Conservation and Open Space Plan. Using the adopted five-year financial analysis model to the San Joaquin County Multi-Species Habitat Conservation and Open Space Plan, the SJCOG staff, HTAT, which is the group that oversees this model, and their consultants undertook the annual analysis and summary of 2021. The goal of this analysis is to establish the next year's habitat plan fees paid by the development project. The fees are for impacts under this countywide SJM SCP permits as defined in the three fee model categories, category A being acquisition, category B being assessment and enhancement, and category C, land management and administration. Attached is the detailed staff report from SJCOG, which was presented to their board for review and consideration. A public hearing is required to be held for this item, as well as be reviewed by the other participating legislative bodies, which includes San Joaquin County, Ripon, La Trope, Lodi, Manteca, and Tracy. Therefore, staff recommends council conduct a public hearing and adopt resolution XX-21, approving the 2022 SJM SCP development fees as adjusted pursuant to the financial analysis model update. If you'd like to review the attachments, we've got that resolution, which does show the fees for open space, Ag and Natural, the Vernal Pool, which are uplands, and Vernal Pool wedded. The city itself has not had to participate in this plan since probably the last 10 years because we haven't had a project of this size move forward that would participate. So it's been a long time since the city's participated in this. However, the plan, as it said, was in perpetuity. It's a plan that was adopted long ago that doesn't have an expiration date, and so what it does is essentially for these projects, be able to move them forward utilizing that plan and SJCOG as the assistant to move things forward, whereas if they, if they plan, if we weren't a member of this plan, these projects would have to apply to the government, state, federal agencies to get all their permits, which takes a lot longer and costs a lot more money, where this plan takes them in as long as they're constructing in one of these cities that participates. We did work this out to where SJCOG staff would be available for any questions, but I don't see anyone here, which means they might have been online.
I'm here.
Okay, she's the wrong caller that doesn't have the name on there. So this would be Laurel, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so Laurel Boyd from SJCOG is on the line if you have any other questions or need any other clarification.
Sure. Council members, does there anyone like to speak?
I have some questions. What size of a project will ease this thing effect? As you said, we haven't had one in 10 years, so what size of a project?
Most of the projects from the city of Escalon impact urban habitat land, which is fee exempt. Most of the projects that I've seen that come from the city are usually infill projects, and some of them will have a biological site visit prior to construction, but that is at no cost to the project. The plan would pick up those costs because it was designated as infill when the plan started. But any other project within San Joaquin County as a whole, if they are paying a fee and they are not an infill project, any size participates as long as they're disturbing ground. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, sort of. So are these fees, this new fee structure, are they going up or are they going down?
They are increasing about 12.7% from the previous year. They do fluctuate up and down throughout the years since the habitat plan has been implemented.
Okay, so this is for new development, there's, these certain fees are tacked on for this particular program, and you're telling me for future development, which may happen around here, the fees are going to go up, which is going to increase the cost of building. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is anyone else like to have any questions for the county? No one? Okay, so now we go out here, and if anyone in the audience this evening would like to speak to this matter, we have a representative for the county online to answer your questions. Okay, that's not going to happen. Let's move back to the online group and see if anyone online would like to ask some questions. Okay, so now we'll bring it back to the council for a vote.
Mr. Mayor, I would, my thinking on this particular topic is that this is just another layer of government red tape that future developers or builders would have to deal with. It's going to increase their costs. It's going to make building more difficult, more costly for, you know, frankly, an arbitrary study and a topic. And so with that being said, I would make a motion to reject this proposal and not adopt this new fee schedule.
Okay, before we go there, let me explain something to you. This is an agreement between developers, builders, and the county, which reached a term between themselves that says, "We'll do it this way instead of the other way." This has got endorsements from major builders in the county. Am I correct on this, staff?
BIA.
BIA, excuse me. Building is, they're the ones endorsing this. So I understand your feeling, and I don't disagree with you totally, but regardless of how we feel, it's a done deal. This is pretty much a complimentary vote.
Maybe if I could just provide a little bit of additional information, because the agreement, it was approved back in 2001 or 2003 with the, where the staff report mentioned, it was done in perpetuity. Of course, things have changed, but we're still in that agreement with all of these agencies, and they honor that agreement, and so prices for a lot of other things have increased, but because we still have this plan and are still operating it, we do have some control over those type of things in accordance with the plan. And as Laurel had mentioned, when the plan was established, they did create a map of Escalon and designated certain areas of town certain things, and so we have had smaller projects that aren't considered as environmentally disturbing because they're infill, they're designated infill, and those areas are infill, and so the most they have is that biological checkup or are exempt from fees. Not to say it won't always be that way in the future, but they honor what was approved back when the plan was established. So it does streamline compared to what would need to happen for projects in this state if they were to do it now without the plan, both fees and process.
Mayor Alves, I'd like to offer, I haven't heard a second yet, I'd like to offer a competing motion, which would be to approve the 2022 SJM SCP development fees as adjusted pursuant to the financial analyst model update.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Very good. All right, we'll move on to the next item, and it is a public hearing item. Conduct a public hearing on proposed rate increases for solid waste disposal services in accordance with proposition 218. Adopt a resolution 21, approving the update rate schedule effective January 1, 2022, conditions upon approval of the amended franchise agreement with Jilton Solid Waste Management Staff.
Thank you, Mayor. For the past number of years, the California Legislature has passed a variety of new laws significantly affecting the way that solid waste and recycling can be managed in California. The most recent legislation, SB 1383, relating to short-lived climate pollutants, organic waste reduction, places new requirements on local jurisdictions with to divert organic waste from the landfills. SB 1383 further supports statewide efforts to achieve the statewide 75% recycling goal established in Assembly Bill 341, and strengthens the implementation of mandatory commercial organics recycling established in AB 1826. Regulations to implement SB 1383 were finalized on November 10, 2020, and will take effect January 1, 2022. Local jurisdictions in the state are required to adopt enforceable mechanisms to implement SB 1383 mandates. SB 1383 is intended to reduce methane emissions at landfills through a process of reducing the disposal of organic waste by 75% below 2014 levels. Organic waste is defined as green materials, wood waste, fiber materials, food scraps, food soil, paper, and landscaping and pruning waste. In order to meet these mandates, upgrades are needed to Escalon's current waste disposal system. The city of Escalon contracts with Jilton Solid Waste Management to pick up, sort, and dispose of all solid waste within the city. Jilton submitted a petition letter requesting an extraordinary cost increase to implement SB 1383 regulations under their contract with the city. Rate increases for solid waste services are subject to a proposition 218 hearing and process. At the city council meeting on September 7, the city council accepted Jilton's petition and authorized staff to proceed with the Prop 218 process and other contract negotiations. As a part of this process, a Prop 218 notice was mailed out to every property owner based on the most recent tax assessor's rule and to every tenant directly responsible for the solid waste bill. The Prop 218 notice was advertised with a November 15 public hearing at Escalon City Hall and the proposed solid waste increases. The notices were mailed out September 17, 2021. Property owners and tenants may mail written protests to City Hall by 5:00 p.m. on November 15, 2021, or hand-deliver written protests to the city clerk by close of the public hearing. In order for a written protest to be valid, it must include the name of the person protesting, the address of the property for which the protest is submitted, and the signature of the person protesting. Protests submitted electronically will not be counted. In accordance with Proposition 218, if a majority of the affected property owners in Escalon do not submit written protests against the proposed fees, the city council may impose the proposed fees. The rates discussed within this report are the rate increases requested and proposed by Jilton in order to update and provide the additional services to implement the SB 1383 regulations and incorporate an annual consumer price index adjustment. The CPI adjustment initially requested by Jilton back in May is included in the proposed rate schedule. The SB 1383 regulations not only require a reduction of organic waste currently going to the landfills, it also has specific procurement requirements for each jurisdiction to procure a specific amount of recovered organic waste products, compost, mulch, renewable gas, electricity generated from biomass conversion on a yearly basis. Under a proposed amendment to the franchise agreement, which will be presented to the council in December, Jilton has offered to provide monitoring, reporting, route reviews, waste audits, and outreach and education to assist the city in satisfying SB 1383 requirements in exchange for additional compensation. City staff finds it appropriate to opt in for this provision of these additional services by Jilton to obtain full compliance with SB 1383 regulations. If the council does not approve the rates at the conclusion of the Prop 218 hearing, or if a majority of the rate payers protest the rates under the hearing, the rates will not be instituted. Staff has included a provision within the resolution that would only allow execution of the new rates effective January 1, 2022, upon council approval of the amended franchise agreement. Staff and legal counsel met with Jilton back in December, or excuse me, September, to discuss potential amendments needed to the franchise agreement to incorporate the updates required by SB 1383 regulations. These amendments remain under council review and will be brought to the city council for review in December. The fiscal impact, there will be increased cost to rate payers for organic waste collection services as indicated below. And as you see in the staff report, we have the proposed effective billing statement for January 1, 2022, the basic cart services, which we have a 60-gallon, a 90-gallon, a 90-gallon organics, and then any additional cart type. We have the current rates versus the new rates. And then the senior and disabled rates apply to those that are 67 or older or who have been identified as permanently disabled. Discounted rates apply to the primary account holder and must reside at the residence. Customers must sign up to receive discounted rates by filling out the senior discount form and returning to City Hall with a copy of a driver's license or disability award letter for verification purposes. And then we also have our senior or disabled rates for the 60-gallon and the 90-gallon, and then an additional cart. And these rates include the 2.5% CPI increase plus extraordinary cost increases due to the state mandate 1383. The standard rate is less than $3, and then there's a note that was indicated in the notice, the senior rate for the 90-gallon can will no longer be offered once this is updated. And so there, the fees include all of these categories. Company provided automated cart for the weekly collection of the basic service, organic waste, there's a CRT voucher program, two CRT customers per year, curbside collection of bulky items, two appointments per customer per year, curbside collection of e-waste, four appointments per customer per year, compost procurement, contamination monitoring, route reviews, and waste audits, outreach and education. And then we also have the costs associated with updating the fees for the front loader bins, and we have the number of accounts that have these, sizes of bins, and the collection frequency per week, and what their current rates are, and what their new rates would be. And then on the next page, we also have the additional charges, and these are services that may be at the customer's request, which include an extra dump on your cart, going back to pick up your can. which include an extra dump on your cart, going back to pick up your can, lock installation, a bin painting or washing. And then for any waste appointments, you would just call their customer service line. So beginning January 2023, which would be a year from when the rates are implemented, and each January 1 thereafter through and including January 1, 2026, the rates set forth above will automatically be adjusted to reflect the annual change in the Consumer Price Index for all urban users published by the U.S. Department of Labor for the San Francisco, Glen San Jose, California statistical area. Such adjustments shall not exceed 2.5% per year, and that's in accordance with the existing franchise agreement. So we have the resolution included. We do have members from Jilton Solid Waste in the audience if you have any questions regarding this item.
I've got a question for you.
Sure.
On the 90-gallon can, there are no discounts, but there is on the 60. So seniors who want a discount, they can gain discounts by going to a smaller can, number one. And number two, they will receive a senior discount. Is that correct?
Correct, as long as they bring in their verification.
Well, yeah, that's not a problem. I get it.
Yes.
So that's a nice little discount. If you took the two in consideration, what are you knocking it down? About three or four bucks?
Yes.
Yeah. But they need to come to the city, get their application, fill it out, show proof of ID, and then it goes into the next month billing.
Yes, and when those Prop 218 notices went out, we were receiving an influx of calls from the seniors in the community. So we did sign up many people for that rate.
Oh, very good. Over the phone?
Well, over the phone, they inquire, and then we ask them to come in and bring in their information.
I get it.
Yeah.
Okay, gentlemen, are there any questions for Mr. Jilton?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. So we sent out the survey, right? What kind of responses did we get from people about this rate increase?
That'll come up during when we go through this process.
This is just to do the 218.
Correct. So the city ourselves, we've received 10 protests.
10?
Yes.
Yeah, a question for...
At this point in time.
For the Jilton representatives. I'm just kind of curious how the process is going. This is probably a huge endeavor for your company, and I'm just kind of curious how it's going.
Well, it's going. We've got seven, six in 218 process? We have six in the 218 process. It's following in the same footsteps you folks are to go to that process. We have some cities that do not do the 218 process, and they're in the same process as what you're doing. It is going to be a change in everybody's life, and we fully understand that. I didn't make the law, so I'm just following the rules. But everything seems to be going according to par. Just waiting on the processes to go through.
I thought the 218 was a state thing, everybody had to do that. Does some cities not have to do that?
There is a debate in the law as to whether it is required for trash services. So that is an abundance of caution to make sure it's not challenged in the city. We are doing the Prop 218 hearing, as is a lot of other cities.
How's that MRF construction going?
It's, uh, equipment is being, well, we haven't got the equipment online yet. We've got the discussions of what and who and all them kind of things. But I haven't been willing to go out and spend a whole lot of money until I know I've got the process done.
It'll probably be stuck on a shipping container, just FYI, so. You'll have to wait a long time.
Hopefully, we can buy it in United.
I want to extend your timeline a little bit. Thank you.
But the biggest thing is the organic. We've got that machinery in, and some of it's installed and doing the organic side of it.
Okay, thank you.
The last time you were here, I asked you if you could tell us how much green waste you're currently removing. And you said that time you didn't know. Is that right?
How much is...
How much are you removing of the green waste currently?
We are, right now, probably, with what's going on, we're probably at about 35%, 40% level.
What was the 939's requirement? AB 939?
AB 939 was waste reduction to the landfill. Kind of similar to this, but it was just basically measured what is not going to the landfill, period. So whatever was diverted, like wood waste or feed materials, stuff that went to livestock that used to go to the landfill, that kind of was what 939 was. This is kind of a spinoff of 939. Apparently, they weren't happy with the reduction enough, so they went after organics. And now the organics is a broad field. Anything that's not man-made is considered organic, and that's how they're going to look at it.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak?
Well, we have a script for opening up the Prop 218 hearing.
Oh, that's right, I got it right here. Here we go. Welcome to the City of Escalon's public hearing on proposed increases to maximize rates for solid waste service charge. Before we open the hearing, I would like to ask our city attorney to explain the requirements governing this public hearing and the proposed adoption of rates and changes. There you are.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This public hearing was set in compliance with Prop 218 to ensure maximum transparency and an abundance of caution. The city voluntarily subjected the proposed maximum rates to the Prop 218 procedures. And specifically for the record, does not concede their applicability to privately provide solid waste services if needed. The city mailed a notice to this public hearing to any record owner whose property is subject to the imposition of the proposed rates and changes, and any customer of record who are not property owners, that are tenants. The date and time of this public hearing is not less than 45 days after the city mailed out the notice. Therefore, this hearing is timely. The purpose of the public hearing is for the City Council to hear all oral testimony and to consider any written protest concerning the proposed increases to the maximum rates. It is also held to determine whether there is a majority protest at the proposed rates and whether to proceed with the adoption of the proposed rates. Property owners and tenants, you're not required to provide oral testimony at today's hearing. Of course, you can if you wish. But if you wanted to, you can simply submit a written protest directly to the city clerk who's here today indicating your opposition to the proposed rates. Importantly, if you wish your protest to be counted, it must be in writing. You must submit a written protest prior to the close of this public hearing tonight. The public hearing will be closed after the City Council has heard and considered all the oral testimony on the items. Oral comments made today do not qualify as written protests. So you must submit a written protest in addition to your oral comments if you want to protest the proposed rate changes. If written protests against the proposed rates are presented by a majority of the owners identified, upon which the charge to be imposed, or tenants directly liable for the payment of the charges, the City Council may not impose the rates. If there's not a majority protest, the City Council may impose the rates. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The public hearing will be conducted in the following manner. The City Council will open the public hearing for any person wishing to speak on this item. After all oral testimonies have been heard, the City Council will close the public hearing. Only those written protests submitted prior to the close of the public hearing will be counted. You will be given a maximum of three minutes so we can ask that you keep your comments brief and to the point so that we can allow everyone a chance to speak. Our city clerk will be keeping time for each speaker. You will be notified when you have reached the maximum time allowed. If previous speakers have already addressed the items you were going to speak on, you are not required to state them as well and have the opportunity to waive your right to speak. Right there, okay. All right, to facilitate the discussion, any questions from the speaker will not be answered during the public hearing. We will now open the public hearing. We will hear from anyone who wishes to speak. You may come, approach the podium, and give us your name, please. And you have three minutes.
My name's Michael Patterson. I live on Main Street. It's more of a question for Jilton themselves, but I'm looking at the rate fee schedule. And as I understand it, this 1193 or whatever is concerned with increasing the separation of organics versus regular landfill trash. Why is there such a steep increase on green waste cans? It's 250% the price, so it's 150% increase. If you look at the regular waste cart, it's only 30% increase. I'm just curious where that separation comes from. I mean, and the additional cart of any kind is now almost three times the price.
Mr. Lawyer, a question. We can't discuss or have debate on this. My question is, at what point do we answer all these questions?
No, we can't answer your questions right now. I think that'd be a great idea. Sorry about that.
No, I'm just saying, at what point do we get to answer those questions?
Well, you could answer, if you have some answers for the four particular questions, like right now, you can go ahead and answer them during the comment section.
I don't have an answer.
That time would not be counted against the speaker's time. And then you could also discuss it or answer it once it's brought back to the council for discussion afterwards, if you wish.
So would it be proper now at this point, when this gentleman asked a question for Mr. Jilton, could he answer that question?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Jilton, would you like to answer that question? Thank you.
One of the, has actually been developed is two streams, where we had some going to compost that was in the green can, and then we had the waste that was going to the landfill or waste energy plant. What the state of California is telling us now, we have to do more composting and keep that from the landfill. So the two streams now is organic and MSW or solid waste. We have to also sort the organics out of the black can, which is the material going to the waste energy plant or the landfill. And then we have to clean the contaminants up. Before it can be composted, it has to be down to less than 1% contamination before the state of California will consider it compostable material. Otherwise, we're trying to compost garbage. So all that processing is a lot of the cleaning and taking care of the stuff because, like we've discussed before, we still can't sort our laundry correctly, much less sort our trash correctly. And so therefore, we have to still ensure, no matter if we are instructed to do one thing, it doesn't always happen. And so that's where the cost is, in labor, machinery, to do all that stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Jilton. All right, does anyone else like to come up and speak this evening? Have your name, please. You have three minutes.
I won't take all three minutes, I promise. Sean Strowman, Yosemite Avenue. Once again, I think this is a state law where they're imposing their will on little old Escalon, and we don't really have a choice. I only have a request for the Jilton folks, and I understand that there's a certain route and certain time for them to do their job when it comes to pickup. But it would really help if your drivers, if they happen to drop some debris out of the containers on the street, if they can just take a step outside and throw it in the can. Because numerous times, I come home and I see some debris on the ground because the driver can't take the time to get out of his truck to throw it in the truck. It's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else out there this evening that'd like to come up and give us your opinion? Name, please.
Tricia Stevens, and I live on Barbera Court. And I just really want to make a comment in regards to this letter. I'm hoping that in the future, that maybe the city can take it upon themselves to maybe make it to where it's more obvious, maybe in bold writing, about submitting a written protest. I read this, and it wasn't until somebody made me aware that that was the case, did I not really realize that that was a thing that needed to happen. And then after listening to what he had to say in regards to, you know, not accepting a written protest, this, that, and the other thing, on and on he went, a lot of stuff I didn't really understand. I'm thinking, why isn't that in here? Okay, because I hear that there was only 10 protests that were sent to the city. That just to me boggles my mind because I feel that if it was a yes and no question, do you want this or do you not? There was a checkmark where you could put something on here. People would have sent it in and said, I either oppose or I agree. And there is nothing on here that states that. And I also have one question for Mr. Jilton, maybe three minutes. But I'd like to know what your profits were for your last fiscal year.
Well, they were in the decline. It was a negative. We have been going through a pandemic. Unfortunately, we're a central business. We had to keep our workforce going. We had to find people who did not have, want to work because they were getting free money from the government. And it has cost me a lot of overtime and a lot of other things where parts and equipment were unavailable because they were stuck on a ship. And so therefore, I have not made a profit this year or the year previous.
Thank you, Mr. Jilton. Are there any other interested parties in the audience that would like to speak? And seeing none, we're going to move it to the online callers. Do we have anyone online that would like to speak regarding this issue this evening? All right, so, after all, okay. Seeing no more others who wish to speak, I'm prepared to close the public hearing. Before I can do that, I would like to provide anyone who would like to submit or withdraw a written protest the opportunity to do so. So if you want to write something now, you have that opportunity. If you want to withdraw, you have that opportunity. Once the public hearing is closed, the City Council may no longer accept any written protests on the proposed rate increase. Are there any remaining written protests to be delivered to the city clerk? All right. I would ask that the city clerk to provide the City Council with the tabulation results for all the valid written protests submitted prior to the close of the public hearing. City clerk.
Prior to the close of the public hearing, we received a total of 10 written protest letters regarding the rates for the solid waste service charges. For the proposed rates for the city's solid waste service charges, a majority of the owners of the identified parcels or tenants directly liable for such charges, for example, the number required to constitute a majority protest would equal 1,643. A majority protest does not exist to the proposed rates for the solid waste service charges.
Okay. The city clerk has advised us that the base, based on the number of valid written protests submitted prior to the close of the public hearing, a majority protest does not exist for the adoption of the proposed maximum rates for the solid waste service charges. The City Council may now proceed to consider the proposed resolution to adopt the maximum solid waste service charges. As a reminder, the time for public comment has ended, and the City Council will not engage directly with any individual customer or member of the public. Do not, do any members of the City Council wish to speak or call on staff for any clarification with respect to the proposed increase? I'm going to say something. I agree with the lady that came up and said about the 218 as it was mailed out. I do not believe that, in my mind, is the way we want to do that. I believe the goal of 218 is to get feedback. And the reason I like the feedback is because these unfunded mandates need to be addressed. They are out of control. I have no hard feelings towards the Jilton family or their business. They got to make a living, and that's out of their control. But I believe California is a rule where the unfunded mandates are criminal. What they do is they steal our freedom, they steal our money. It's wrong. And I hope someday people will get off their tails and come to meetings and voice that opinion and stop this robbery. That's all I'm going to say about it, and I'll pass on to the other council members.
Yeah, in response to the notion that if we simply put out a yes or no vote in the mail, I agree with you, that would be much easier. Hey, we're going to charge you more for this thing. Yes or no? Hey, we're going to charge you more for this thing, yes or no? No, I don't think, I think everybody would vote no, and they should vote no. The tricky thing is it doesn't explain the whole picture. And to put this in perspective, not to disagree with the mayor entirely, but I don't look at this as exactly an unfunded mandate. The, the state is trying to do what the state does, what government does, and they want to improve our lives for us. And they're willing to, they're, they're willing to, they're willing to charge us and not ask us our opinion, but they're willing to go ahead and do it. And what's happened is, we have this relationship with our garbage disposal company that we've had for decades. That cost is, is, is actually the onus is on them to, to do what they have to do with this waste. And in order for them, as you heard, and you very boldly asked the question, what the gentleman's profit was, they're, they're trying to survive. You know, you, you cannot run a business and lose money. It's just a reality. And I, I look at this as, they're passing the cost on to the customer, which is us. Yes, it hurts, but in this particular instance, I think we can justify it. And that's my take on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Crumbridge. Okay, are there any other comments that need to be made before we vote for the resolution?
No, we're about ready to go.
You're good?
Yeah, no, yeah, no more comments, other than, other than, how many of you guys have ever gone to casino, see the blackjack dealer dealing cards like that? That's how this state deals regulations, pretty much the same way. But the difference is this, unlike the casino, which you hope is playing a fair game, the state plays a rigged game. How do they do it? Well, for example, in this, with this particular bill, what have they done? They've made the municipalities responsible, staffs just like these, staff who are already maxed out, staff who we can't afford to pay for anybody else to handle, all the data collection and all the work involved to report back to the state to make sure that we're doing their bidding for them, okay? Then they make the contractor come up and beg for an increase, and, and I don't even want to think about how much money you guys are laying out on this thing, you know? And you've got to almost do this, leave the cart before the horse on this thing as you wait for all these 218s to come through. Then they make a council do something that we know is incredibly unpopular, none of us want to do, it's going to raise our rates too. None of us are business people in this town, including me. I'm staring at a couple of these new rates that I'm going to have to be paying that I don't like. And then ultimately, they make all of us pay for them. Everybody in this room pay for these rates. So basically, what are they doing? They're basically making us choose the best of a bunch of horrible options. All right? And that's why reluctantly, really reluctantly, I move to approve the updated rate schedule effective January 1, 2022, condition upon approval of the amended franchise agreement with Jilton Solid Waste Management. Please make sure you put reluctant in there.
I love it. Okay.
Just to clarify, Mayor, uh, Mayor, I'm going back a year. That's to, was the motion to approve the resolution is drafted?
The resolution that's drafted, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All of us in favor? Aye. Who's opposed? Okay, motion carries, 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Jilton. Good luck. All right, we're moving on to item. Where are you at here? I'm going to dig through this mayor. Where am I? Three. Three? All right, wait a minute.
Seven.
No, we're done with that. I got seven. Okay, seven administrative matters. Consider a public request from Donell Hagan to adopt a resolution opposing state-issued COVID-19 vaccination mandates for students, teachers, and other school employees. Staff, or is it, we're going to have them come and speak now, is that the deal?
I just wanted to go over the staff report first.
Go ahead.
So in accordance with the city's agenda policy, which we adopted back in May, if a member of the public wishes to request an item placed on the agenda, they must do so in writing with the adopted form. This request is shared by the city manager during a council meeting, which we did at the last meeting, to determine if there was support by the majority of the council. Once the item has been supported by council, an item will be placed on the future agenda, and public members may submit additional information as appropriate or as requested by staff. Supporting documentation and electronic materials must be submitted six days prior.
Dominique, we're having some technical issues. Can we wait until we get it pulled up on the screen?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just having trouble loading.
Page 130.
Number seven, hit seven.
Let's see what the hell page that is.
Because it's off a flash drive. We lost it. Go ahead and exit out.
All right, that is page.
And I would just, she's just going to pull up the staff report real quick here. So at the November 1st meeting, which was our last meeting, Donell Hagan's agenda item request, along with public comments in support of the request, was heard by the city council. City council voted for one in favor of adding the item to a council meeting for discussion. Hagan has submitted additional documents, which are attached to this staff report supporting the request. I also have had a few people on the line who have already indicated that they would wish to speak on this item. I also have a comment that was submitted via email that all of you did receive, that I can read into the record as well. And then we do have members from the audience that would like to speak on this item.
All right, let's start with public comment. Anyone who'd like to speak on this matter, please come to the podium, and we'll give you five minutes to explain what it is you'd like to tell us.
Donell Hagan, do I get to come up again?
You need to explain.
Donell Hagan.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that that little bit just segmented into what I'm going to talk about, because your just distaste for mandates. That's what I got, my distaste for these mandates. So I just wanted to kind of clarify a few things, and I do have five minutes, right? I wrote some things down, so I'm going to try to stay on point, otherwise I just get all over.
Thank you.
Thank you all for allowing me this time and opportunity to present this information. A lot of things have changed since I was here last, as she stated earlier on the first. Before I get started, I want to take a few questions, few seconds, and ask you guys two questions. You don't have to answer them out loud, just keep it to yourself. Yes or no, it's easy, okay? Number one, do you believe that every citizen who wants a COVID-19 vaccination has the right to get one? Question number two, do you believe that people should have the right to refuse the COVID-19 vaccination based on religious, medical, or personal reasons? The November 1st Escalon City Council meeting agenda described my topic as regarding the state-issued mandate for COVID-19 vaccinations. Thankfully, I was added to the agenda again tonight. And this time, my, my topic was described as to adopt a resolution opposing state-issued COVID-19 vaccination mandates for students, teachers, and other school employees. So first, I want to clear up some confusion, okay? The narrative's kind of changed a little bit. So yes, one of my goals is to advocate for students, teachers, and other school employees. I'm working with the Escalon School District and the San Joaquin County Office of Education to do so. I know that the city council has no jurisdiction over that and the school district. But part, but the part about the request for a resolution was not wrong. That's why I'm here tonight. I want to propose that the Escalon City Council develops a resolution to oppose vaccine mandates, because each city is responsible for such services, such as police, fire, animal control, parks and recreation, public works, water, wastewater, solid waste, and library. In my opinion, the Escalon City Council needs to propose and adopt a resolution that will continue to allow those individuals the freedom to make their own medical decisions, especially regarding the COVID-19 vaccination. As a volunteer coach for the Escalon Recreation Program for the past six years, it would be reassuring to know that the city of Escalon would never require me to provide my personal health as a condition of coaching. If I eventually have to remove my kids from the public school system due to this mandate, at least I would feel confident that they would still be able to participate in the Escalon Recreation Program without discrimination against them due to their vaccination status. This week, a lot of confusing things have happened in the news. Don't know if you guys are keeping track. The OSHA emergency temporary standard is currently on pause per the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals, which stated that workers at all U.S. companies with more than 100 employees must be fully vaccinated or submit to weekly testing by January 4th, while at the same time, Governor Gavin Newsom came out and stated that California will remain in a state of emergency until March 2022. So with so much confusion and conflict happening in the news, the logical thing is to look at the data. The San Joaquin County Public Health website from November 3rd for Escalon stated that there have been 1,052 total COVID-19 cases, seven new cases per that date, and 17 total deaths per that date, zero new deaths. The population of Escalon is roughly 7,538. Therefore, this virus that the government is forcing vaccinations for and implementing long-term state of emergencies for has killed 0.225% of the total population of Escalon. That is less than 100, 1%. And while I am very empathetic to those 17 families that have lost loved ones, so have I, lost them, I do not feel as though that should warrant our freedoms being taken away. In San Joaquin County, according to the CDC website, 73% of the population has been vaccinated. Now, whether those individuals did so upon their own free will, or they did so to keep their jobs, we will never know. But what I do know is the city of Escalon should pass a resolution that opposes any state or federal COVID-19 vaccination mandates, regardless of the halts made by the judicial, judicial system, or continued state emergency declarations. Therefore, continuing to allow the Escalon community members the autonomy to make their own medical decisions, because I believe individuals are intelligent enough to look at the data and statistics.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. Now getting back to the two questions, if you answered yes to both those questions, you are well on your way to adopting a resolutions, as those two questions were taken from resolutions that I have already sent you the links for. So thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Diana Trejo, and I'm here to express my opposition to the COVID-19 vaccine mandates issued by Governor Gavin Newsom. At the start of the meeting, we all stood and pledged our allegiance to the flag, to this country, the pledge that speaks of liberty and justice for all. But lately, it seems like liberty, freedom, personal rights are being disregarded by our elected officials at the state and federal level. Through these mandates, the government's trying to make a one-size-fits-all, across-the-board medical decision for every child in the state. Because this vaccine is new, no long-term studies have been done validating its safety. Some serious adverse reactions are being reported. I find this mandate to be an outrageous abuse of power. Recently, President Biden ordered OSHA to issue similar mandates targeted to larger businesses. The Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals recently put a hold on the mandate citing serious constitutional concerns. We're seeing more progressive liberal areas of the state ban unvaccinated students from in-person learning, terminate employment of public schoolteachers and employees in the private sector because they refuse to get vaccinated. We're also starting to see in the Bay Area and southern areas of the state, vaccine passports are required for adults and children to enter establishments like restaurants, movie theaters, gyms, museums, and other indoor venues. The state and federal, federal government will continue to push their agenda unless the citizens, the cities, the counties push back against these mandates. These segregationist actions will continue to spread unless the people say, no more. I'm a parent of kids that attend school in town, and I want them to continue to learn in the classroom. I'm a patron that shops and spends money at local businesses, and I want to continue to be allowed inside these businesses. And I just find it crazy that I have to say I want to continue to be allowed to go into businesses. Never did I think that this would happen. I'm a community member, engaged in town events and city recreation activities, and I don't want to be banned from these activities. But my family will not be coerced into getting vaccinated because the government made it so inconvenient not to be. In the audience tonight are hardworking, tax-paying, contributing members of society, and the governor has no right to make medical, medical decisions for our families or create policies that cause us to be discriminated against because of private medical decisions. Tonight, I'm asking the city council to stand up for the freedom of Escalon children, teachers, parents, residents, and businesses. As other cities, counties, and school districts in the state are doing, I encourage you to pass two resolutions at the next council meeting and share them with policymakers. The first, supporting and encouraging the school district to oppose vaccine mandates for students, teachers, and staff. And the second resolution opposing vaccine mandates for Escalon's general population and businesses. For me, this is no longer about vaccine safety, it's a freedom issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Mello. I also work for Escalon School District. I work in the cafeteria. I was not planning on speaking tonight, so I'm against the mandate, I'm not against the vaccine shot. I call it a shot, it's not a vaccine. That's my personal opinion. I don't believe in this mandate, and I really hope that you guys will fight for us, because I love my job, I love the children. And this is ridiculous that we are being forced to do something that we do not want to do. It's our God-given right, we should feel, we should do what we want and not have the government force us to do it. So please, don't mandate. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Frabos. I have three children in Escalon Unified District. I had a thing I was going to say, but you know, Robert Swift made an excellent point a few minutes ago about what the government, the state government, what they feel that they can make people do whatever they choose to have them do through these different mandates. Worse, what we saw earlier with Jilton, Jilton has to deal with something that's already a done deal. This is a done deal, they're passing it down, passing the buck to the taxpayer, to the rate payer, to cover what the state has said that Jilton's got to do. It's a done deal, and we're seeing the end of the process. We're still at the beginning. This deal is not a done deal. And I oppose the mandate, and I support, and I hope that this council makes the decision to adopt a resolution to oppose these vaccinations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Corinne Whitlow. First and foremost, I'm a mom. Second, I'm a nurse. I've worked through this whole pandemic without a vaccine, and I'm still standing. And third, I'm a very concerned citizen. I am very thankful that you guys have taken this time to talk about supporting and adopting a resolution. My concern is looking at these mandates that are coming from the state. They're very concerning, obviously. You guys are concerned, you've made comments. I've also heard things like, I'm going to reluctantly pass this, please note reluctantly. We can't do that anymore. Doing these types of things and reluctantly passing these things is why we're in this situation. We can no longer be comfortable doing these things. It's going to be too late if we keep doing that. I am really thankful that we have this opportunity. You listened to your constituents last time. I hope that the supervisor in the back is also listening to his constituents, because this isn't something that can be done by one mayor, by one city council, by a school district, by even a county. This is something that has to be done by everybody and by a community. I just appreciate you guys for being courageous and putting this at least on the agenda. I really do think we're lacking leadership in California. It actually doesn't feel like the Republic of California anymore. It feels like a kingdom, and we have a king, King Newsom, and he's calling the shots, literally. Because of this, I do believe local jurisdiction is imperative for our peace and our well-being as a community. These mandates are a one-size-fits-all solution for a very dynamic situation. I work in an acute care hospital, I know how dynamic this is, and to assume one thing is going to help us, we're going to end up hurt. This is a tool in our toolbox, we cannot be naive to that, and we cannot, and this isn't going to save us. And this, these mandates wouldn't even be a thing if we weren't in a continuous state of emergency. I mean, you guys can quickly Google what an emergency is, but I guarantee it's not something that's supposed to last for years. March 2022 is where we plan to go with this, which is going to be a two-year mark. So either we're not doing something right, we have failed leadership, or both. So things to kind of think about, the state of emergency that we're in here. So maybe California is in a state of emergency, but it's probably because of the data they look at is essentially a rectangle with dots and arrows, looks kind of confusing and scary, who knows what's going on. There's really not sources on these things. I know as a nurse, one of the first things I'm supposed to, you know, take my information, kind of check out the source, make sure it's legit, peer-reviewed. These, this data is faulty. We know about the PCR tests, they're faulty, that's the reason why we have to get a new test. The information you receive is manipulated, it is not the full picture. Again, they like to take lots of information and put them in dots and arrows. There are no measurable goals for the state of emergency. What are we trying to accomplish here? If you look at San Joaquin County, there are, up to date, 101,291 positive COVID rates. If you look at San Joaquin County, there are, up to date, 101,291 positive COVID rates, or COVID tests, 1,803 deaths. That is a death rate of, write this down, because you have to really see this, 0.017. That is the death rate of COVID in your county. Is that a state of emergency? If it was a state of emergency, would we be firing healthcare workers and firefighters who go to protect our community? I really ask you to check out this information for yourself. Right now, public health and politics are intertwined, so the information that you're getting is very concerning, and we're really on a slippery slope here if we don't do something quickly. One thing that is an emergency, and most people don't know about it, which is also concerning, is as of October, there was an article published on the 19th that stated the Academy of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, and Children's Health Association declared a national emergency on our children's mental health.
Real emergency.
Do you know that? Do you know that? That should concern everybody. And we cannot allow government to further burden our children who are already hurting because of society's problems, because we can't get it together. Do we even have anything to help COVID? Once people are sick, no, we send them home and tell them, "Come back when you can't breathe." I can go on all day about these mandate things, but I really ask you to start challenging some of the stuff you're hearing. Stop passing these things through, because it's just part of the process. I just appreciate your time and standing up. I don't, like I said, I don't think one person can do this, I don't think one council can do this, but I think together, if we take a stand, we can do this.
Thank you.
Michael Patterson again. I'm gonna say ditto, and then I'm gonna ask you all to follow me on a little rambling story. I came to Escalon 13 years ago. I grew up in a small town called Penn Valley, Northern California, long ways away from my neighbors, didn't really know what community was because I didn't live in town. I gotta say, this town like opened its arms and brought me in, and like, there's a real sense of community here, and I appreciate that. You know, we've got great people, you know, we've got great police officers, we've got great fire department, we've got, you know, great EMS, got a tremendous city council. I just, like, think about what is happening in, like, polarizing communities right now. If you want to get a shot, get a shot. We've had people, you know, just say basically the same thing. I think it's an important stand to take, and it sends a message. It sends a message to the community that says, "We're here for you, and we're here to protect your choice." Because that's what it's about, protecting your choices. Supporting your neighbors, loving your neighbors, helping your neighbors, you know, if somebody asks you for help, you help them. You don't turn your back. You don't say, "Ah, sorry, you know what, you didn't get that, get out of here," you know? So I just, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other, there we go.
Hi, my name's Dr. Andrew Hagan. Apologize, don't have any script or anything, but basically, obviously what they're saying is a real concern. You know, what we're basically seeing, in my opinion, is the public health system being used in a communist-style hostile takeover. So what you're seeing, if you read Mao, you're looking at BLM, you look at Stalin, you're looking at your mandates, you look at Nazi Germany, health passes, digital vaccine passports. History teaches you a lot, if you just read it and understand it. So what I'm seeing is that stuff operating under the guise of public health and trying to help, you know, we're helping the public. And reality is, people need to take care of their own selves, and helping the community around them when they can. Obviously, if you want to get a vaccination, freedom of choice is freedom of choice. But that's where our Constitution has always been based on. We're having a violation of the Nuremberg Codes, violation of our constitutional rights, violation of California Civil Code, all the way down to the Education Code, Education Code 220. So I hope or implore you guys to really look at the bigger picture and understand, it's a, it's a moment in history that needs to go the other direction. And that's all I gotta say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patricia Stevens, and as you know, I wasn't really here for this, but I see that this is on here, so I do have a couple of things I want to say. So basically, I just want to say I do believe that people have a choice of what they want to do, but I don't believe in mandates. I hope that the City Council will get FACS annated, okay? F-A-C-T-S annated, okay? Because what they're trying to do to people and the kids in this, in this state is ridiculous. I hope that you take a chance to look at the VAERS report so that you can see all the adverse effects that are happening to many individuals. And this is what's gonna happen to the wash machines of the future, which are children who keep the germs at a level that keeps us all safe. And that is what's gonna be taken away if these mandates happen. You're gonna begin to see children and teenagers who are playing football, basketball, collapse in the middle of a game, and you are not gonna know why. Everybody will assume it is because of something natural. Is it really? Are they gonna take a look? No. Because even when they do autopsies on people, they never say that it had anything to do with the vaccine. So all's what I ask is that you please do your due diligence in researching the vaccine in kids and adults. Take a look at the VAERS report, that is totally, it's not even accurate. The numbers are much higher due to the confusion of even doing a report on the VAERS. If you have a chance, take a look at a website called thehighwire.com. In the last episode, go past the first story and go into the second, and you will completely have a different view of what a mandate is going to do to our children. You will never think of it the same again, as you watch individuals collapse for no reason, perfectly healthy individuals. We just recently had a 23-year-old jogger, completely healthy, collapse for no reason at all, other than knowing that she received the vaccine. So I just implore that before you do this, to parents in this community, to the kids, that whatever this resolution is that this young lady put in front of you, I'm not real sure what it is all about, I just ask that you do research before you make any decisions, and that I believe that you also need to support the citizens, because once something happens, the possibility of it ever being reversed is never gonna happen.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak this evening?
Good evening, my name is Christine Villanzoni, and ditto to what everybody before me has said. I just wanted to come up and share that governmental coercion is bullying. And bullying cannot be fought individually. You can't fight back, it needs to be collectively. And I would like to ask the city to step up, make a resolution, be the voice in preserving our constitutional protection to deny unwanted medical treatments for this untested, short-term or long-term side effect vaccine. Please, don't mandate, be the voice, the strength that your community needs. We can't do it alone. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Daegory. I am also a nurse, like Corinne that we heard from. I want to say I second everything that she said. I wasn't prepared to speak, I came for moral support. I'm a mother of two daughters, I'm a grandmother of two grandsons. I am the wife of a combat veteran who works in law enforcement now in Santa Clara County, so he's also under pressure from these mandates. It's been a really difficult time for families everywhere throughout our nation, really. I work in an acute care hospital. I have been face-to-face with COVID from the very beginning. Things didn't quite make sense to me in the beginning, because all of a sudden, we forgot, we forgot how to handle viral illness for some reason. We're scrambling in the hospitals, protocols are changing. What we're seeing as nurses on the floors with patients don't match what we're hearing in the media. They don't match what we're hearing from public health, individuals that are supposed to be protecting the community, right? They're pushing vaccine, 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 like that's the only way forward. I've seen our hospital protocols have very detrimental effects on patient outcomes. I have seen public health, our county board of supervisors, our officials, our doctors ignore the fact that there are other ways to handle, I apologize, I'm very emotional. It's a tough thing, it's a tough time. We're pushing this vaccine that's not fully tested, that is causing detrimental effects, they're dangerous. We're not promoting nutraceuticals, we're not teaching people how to make themselves healthier, boost their own immune systems, how to get early ambulatory care and treatment. We're just ignoring it, waiting until they're completely distressed and in respiratory failure, and then saying, "Come on into the hospital, we'll take really good care of you." We're understaffed, we can't take proper care of them. We are using protocols that are dangerous and even deadly. Parents, nurses, firefighters, law enforcement, teachers, our community, we are rallying, we are networking, we are connecting, we are rising up, and we are tired of governmental overreach. We're tired of the corruption, we're tired of seeing our health systems operated by politics. We need our city leaders, we need our county leaders to protect us from the state. I know there are limitations to what your authority is. But you guys are community members as well, your parents, grandparents, I assume. We need the protection, not just from vaccine mandates, not just from mandates that are, you know, impacting our other ways of life. These things have to stop, and we need you to support us. And if you today set an example, a precedent, we're moving together, we are united, we are going city to city, we're going to school district to school district, county to county. Help us, set a precedence, and let it spread across California. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Matt Stevens, Barbaric Court. I wasn't planning on talking either, and I just wanted to say that I don't know anybody who would listen to one doctor if that doctor said that they had cancer, or any other kind of illness that was very detrimental. They would usually go talk to another doctor, get multiple opinions. And the reason I bring that up is because we're listening to one doctor, Dr. Fauci. He is the one that makes all of these rules. And I think it's important to point that out, because at this point, we're now having to deal with things like this, where people that don't have an education in medicine are having to make these decisions. And it's scary. And I think that this should be, this shouldn't even be a question in my mind, this should not happen. And I think that it should be left up to the individual to get one or more opinions on the decision that they need to make for themselves. And I thank you very much for allowing us to come and speak our minds. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Sean Strowman, Yosemite Avenue, and I was not planning on speaking about this at all tonight. Maybe my wife is listening. And for me, as most of you know, I'm a rare bird. But I can honestly say that I'm, there she hung up. I am vaccinated, but I also had COVID. I chose to get vaccinated because of my job, but that was my choice. And I look at Mr. Bellinger over here, not Mr. Bellinger up here, but Mr. Bellinger over here chose to put his life on the line for one word. Now, one word is freedom. That's why there are Stars and Stripes behind us, for freedom. And I understand that there, we're standing up to the great State of California machine, and probably not much will change, but at the end of the day, the simple fact of the matter is, is that as community members, as colleagues, as friends, as neighbors, as parents, we all value our freedom. And this is the only way that we can truly stand up and say, "Hey, knock off your crap, we believe in our freedom." Because that's why Mr. Bellinger put his life on the line. I mean, I was faced, as you all know, I'm the Cub Scout leader, and last year I had a choice to disband the PAC that I truly believed in, or I gave the parents freedom to choose if they wanted to wear a mask. Guess what? Cub Scouts is growing in Escalon, it's not receding. Why do we not want to afford these opportunities for our kids? I mean, for those of you that were on the parade, there were 14 kids riding on that deuce and a half on Thursday, thought that, thought that they were mayor of Escalon, no offense to Mayor House. But guess what? If I say, "Well, you need to have vaccination in order to get on the deuce and a half," come on, they're seven years old, they're eight years old, they're 10 years old. They don't know the difference. But instead, we're showing those kids what it means to be community, what it means to be neighbors, what it means to respect your veterans, but most importantly, what it means to be free. Thank you.
All right, anyone else would like to talk before we go to the online people? If you have it, let's have it, now's your chance. Okay then, oh, we got one here, there we go, our county supervisor's gonna weigh in.
Let me first say I have a tremendous amount of respect for the City Council of Escalon. Couple things, just, and I wasn't intended to speak, obviously, but a couple things, we did pass a vaccine passport restriction at the county board of supervisors, so we have done that.
Good for you.
One of the things that, and I won't go into, but, but I don't know, probably none of you watch our meetings, probably none of you watch our meetings, but, but every meeting, we have probably a two-hour discussion about COVID-19. And I, and I'll just narrow it down to a couple of comments. First of all, in the very beginning, I never agreed with the quote "essential businesses", when in fact, we had Costco, and Home Depot, and Walmart, and whatever, that had people coming in with no masks, and yet we closed down small businesses who probably had less of a risk in regards to individuals being infected than those businesses. And I'm not, not against those businesses, I'm just saying, it was foolish, because I always believed that government shouldn't be picking winners and losers, and they did, and they continue to do that. The other part is that we keep raising the issue about herd immunity or natural immunity, which is never discussed. It's always about vaccinated or non-vaccinated, and the reality is, it's immunized or non-immunized. And a lot of individuals, if you add up the number who've actually been affected by COVID and have survived, and certainly, probably, in many studies have been shown, to probably be in better shape as far as avoiding... be in better shape as far as avoiding serious illness because of COVID, but they're never talked about, and it's always about the vaccine. One of the things over the years, and I know all of you probably heard this, and probably most of the audience, but from those individuals who are now are really attacking those who have, for their freedom of choice, decided not to get the vaccine currently, the words "my body, my choice" has been used over and over and over again for decades, and yet the same individuals who have harped on that now deny those individuals who want to make their own freedom of choice in their own lives in regards to their protection. So, all I can say is that whatever you do, I support you because I know all of you get a lot of input, I'll put it that way, but I know you'll make the right decision for your residents. And one last thing, about three months ago, our county council asked the State of California, the California Department of Public Health, to provide specific evidence to show justification for why all these mandates are in place. We're still waiting. So, anyway, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Krista Pfizer. I was going to end on the freedom speech, but I'm gonna now... I am a parent of five, three that attend school here locally, and I also run a local victim service agency, so my body, my choice rings very true. And we talk about personal choice all the time. That is essentially what we are founded on. Every day, we talk about victims who walk in, or victims who call authority if they're victimized, and we talk about the courage it takes to do that. We talk about sending kids to school in unknown environments where we have TikTok and bathroom rules, and fill in the blanks, and kids vaping, and fights at school, and whatnot. It takes courage to do that. And as I sat here to support all the oppositions against the COVID mandates, I was just thinking about how much courage it takes for leaders to really stand up and say, "We are not going to require our employees, our family members, our students, our residents to do this either." And so, I'm going to ask you all to really dig deep, and I hope you all show the courage and the leadership that it takes to stand up for our community as well. Thank you.
Okay, are there anyone else who'd like a shot? Okay, let's go to the phone bank or the internet. Are there people there who would like to speak?
So, I have had three of them indicate to me that they were interested in speaking, and so I'll call it by name, that way they can speak first.
Thank you, one at a time, we'll do it.
Yes, the first one is Deanne Sanchez. If you could please unmute and go ahead and give your comment.
Hello, all. My name is Deanne Sanchez, Arlene Court. I just want to make this quick, that I'm very proud of everyone who attended that meeting tonight, and who spoke up on behalf of our community members and our students. And I just really wanted to say that I'm in favor of the City Council adopting a resolution that does oppose the state-issued COVID-19 vaccination mandates. And all I can think of is, in the beginning, when this all happened, everyone kept saying, you know, "We're all in this together. We're all in this together. We still are, and that's the only way we're going to get out of it." So, on that note, thank you.
The next one that indicated they would want to speak was Angela Bonds. If you could please unmute yourself and provide your comment.
Hi, my name is Angela Bonds, and I just wanted to say that I support the adoption of a resolution opposing the vaccine mandate. I believe in freedom of choice, and that every family should have, make that own decision for their family, and what's right for them, and not be forced to do something that they do not want to do for their family.
The next one was Kurt Kale. If you could please unmute yourself and provide comment, please?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for the time, everybody. There's a couple of people, you know, that really had some great, great talking points. I just want to give kudos to everybody who's there in person, speaking up first and foremost. Secondly, you know, I think one of the things that, you know, kind of the rest of you didn't touch on, that I'm sure all of you are aware of, that I'd like the council to take into account, is that, you know, it's the progression of this whole thing from the onset, you know, it's do this, you know, it's 15 days, flatten the curve, oh, it's just a mask, oh, it's just a couple more months. And then, now that we're here with this vaccine, you know, it's not going to stop it, you know, you get your two shots and done. We already have seen that, you know, the third booster is out, and, you know, other countries, they're already pushing a fourth booster. So, you know, I know a lot of people that willingly, before the mandate, any of this other stuff came forth, was that, you know, it was their choice, they, you know, for whatever reason, their medical choice, they thought that it was in their best interest to get vaccinated. Well, now that, you know, we're pushing this whole idea of third shots and, you know, beyond, you know, they're like, "No, I'm not going to do that. That's ridiculous." And they're, you know, potentially, if that goes forward, where I work, which is a government facility, you know, they'll lose their job if they don't get another shot. You know, they already did it twice, and now they're opposing doing a third one. And that may come down to a point where their job is on the line, you know, to continue doing it, even though all the evidence has shown that this isn't working, you know, the vaccine wasn't designed in a way to where it prevents transmission, or getting it, you know, breakthrough cases, and so on and so forth. But even scarier, the other thing is, you know, we have this vaccine that everybody has, you know, whatever ideas, one way or the other about it. You know, if they allow this, the way that it's been mandated and everything else, and they get this one through on our children and us, it's just going to open the ground for them to do whatever they want in the future. You know, it's not going to just stop here. They're not going to be like, "Oh, well, that was just this pandemic, it was this emergency." It's going to morph into another emergency, and another, and another, until we have no rights left. So, I think a big thing for everybody to look at is, you know, don't just look at the immediate right in front of you right now, you know, you need to be looking a mile down the road and see what, you know, where these people are going, and where they could potentially go if we allow them to. Again, thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for everybody who was there in person. All you had great points, and we got to stick together on this. Thank you.
That was all that it indicated, so if you wanted to ask if anybody else on the line would like to speak.
Would anyone else, either in the audience, on the line, on a phone, wherever, like to speak, you may do so at this time. And since I don't hear or see anyone moving, we'll bring this back.
I just have one comment left, an email, which all of you did receive.
All right, you want to read it?
Read it in, because it was received for this item. And this was from a Justin in Kate Brooks. They were unable to attend the City Council meeting on November 1st, however, able to watch it on the city website a few days later. During the recorded meeting, there were three women who spoke in favor of the City of Escalon to adopt a resolution to oppose vaccine mandates, and one man spoke against it. I don't know if there's still time to consider my opinion, but as the agenda gets set for next week's meeting, if so, I want to let you know that as a community member, I also support the City of Escalon in making a resolution to oppose vaccine mandates. The presenter in the meeting spoke of one other city in California that has already accomplished this, and since then, I have personally learned of a few other cities that have adopted their own as well. I feel like this is important because it reaffirms our freedoms. It is unethical that the government is forcing me and my family members to receive an unwanted vaccine in order to workshop and live, and it would be nice to know that my local government does not support that tyranny. It would be a relief to have a resolution from the City of Escalon that supports their citizens, and their rights, and their freedom. Please consider making it an agenda item during the meeting on November 15th. Thank you so much for my thoughts, for sharing my thoughts on this matter.
Thank you. All right. If there's no more testimony from anywhere, I guess we'll bring it back to the council for discussion, and then you would want to vote, correct?
So, if their council has something that they want to move to vote on, this was put on for a discussion item, so the council could decide whether they want to do something or nothing on this topic.
Well, if we decide we want to, can we? And do it tonight?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Council, is there some input out here? Gentlemen, Mr. Swift, anything?
Well, to be honest with you, I'm ready to make a motion, so we can put it on the table, so we can discuss a specific piece of business on the table.
I've got some questions before we get to that.
Hold that. Go ahead, David.
So, due diligence of being on the City Council is making sure that there's no risks associated with this, and putting us at undue liability. As a city attorney, I know you've looked at this. Can you let us know if there's any repercussions of our city? As we don't have a sphere of influence with the school district, if we do a resolution, is there any concerns you've got with us doing something like this?
Absolutely. There's been a couple of different suggestions here by the different comments. If it's concerning the school district, it certainly is outside, excuse me, the jurisdiction of this council. The, what I would say is, whatever wording is used, is used in such a way that we're not saying we're not the council, or the city's not going to follow the law or mandates. Certainly, the City Council can, it would be better for the City Council to say, "We are opposed to mandates," for example, but it would not be proper for the City Council to adopt a resolution that says, "We're not going to follow the mandates or health orders or laws." So, there's a difference there that I just want to make sure the council recognizes. In terms of any other liability, not for adopting resolutions just opposing what other entities are doing, no. As long as we're not getting into trying to control, dictate, or interfere with other government entities' operations or their jurisdiction, that would be, as long as we're not doing that, we're okay. If we are interfering or trying to order or control some other entity's jurisdiction, then there's a problem.
To follow up on Mark's comments, we have a meeting scheduled this week with the school district, and so if this would be agendized for the next meeting, if council moved in that direction to do resolutions, staff could discuss that with them, and kind of see if they have any intentions to move forward on anything, and if they move forward on something on their end, that we move forward with a supportive document in support of whatever decision they make, if it's like-minded of the councils. But then, if you have a direction you want to go for this council, specific to the city, that would be it.
Okay, any other comments?
Are you thinking a joint resolution with the school board?
So, in my understanding of the items that Deanne was talking about originally, it was to support or encourage the school district, which I've heard they haven't moved forward yet, but I have heard that there may be intentions that they do move forward with something. And so, I think it would be better, staff-wise, if we let them move on their jurisdiction, and then support them, and then if we wanted to move forward with our jurisdiction, to move forward with something of our own, however the council would want us to move forward with that. And those items could be drafted at your direction, and we would bring them all back to the next meeting. And that gives us an opportunity to sit down with the school district, their board members. They do have also a board meeting tomorrow night as well, and so we would meet with them Thursday morning, and kind of put everything together and see where everything's at. That way, it doesn't give any feeling to them that we're overstepping, because they have their areas, the school district, and obviously, the rules and legislation are somewhat different for school districts than they are for cities at this time, so.
Okay, hold it. Just a minute, we'll get to you in a minute. Give us a moment. Okay, any other comments?
I have some.
Go ahead.
So, I think that what I've witnessed tonight is something really special. I'm super encouraged to see people come out and speak like this, on this item. You know, very, very unfortunate that we're so far gone, trying to claw our way back to a real, a real country where we do have freedom of choice, and live in a society where liberty is valued. I think that a joint school board idea is not a good one. I went to the last City Council School Board meeting that we had, and it's not my indication that, I'm not exactly sure what they're going to do, and I don't want to speak on that. So, I'll leave that up to that. But I do think that this particular topic, there's a good movie, some of you might have heard of, it's called Braveheart, and in that movie, William Wallace, you know, says the famous line, "You can take our lives, but you cannot take our freedom." As corny as that sounds, I think that it's applicable. And also, in that movie, they're lining up to do battle with the opposing forces, and he's going to go out there, and one of his officers says, "So, where are you going?" And he says, "I'm going to pick a fight." And I look at this as a great opportunity for a local city to stand up to the powers that be, and the powers that want to take away your liberty. That particular man right now is Gavin Newsom, but he's just one man, you know, he's part of a huge system of politicians that, like I said, they really know what's best for us, and we're just supposed to go along with it. And I will also say this, I think everybody that got up and spoke tonight, whether you're, you know, for vaccine or not, I hope, I hope that we're wrong. I hope that I'm wrong, and that the vaccine is the answer. I really do. My issue is this, though, that's not the issue. The issue is, are you in charge of your own body? Are you in charge of your own decisions and how you want to live your life? And how much can the government control you, and can control your business, and can control your livelihood? And so, with that being said, I am 100% in favor of a very bold statement to the state that we will not enforce, follow, implement, produce any COVID vaccine mandates at all. Thank you.
Mr. Swift?
Yeah.
You had proposed a resolution. I would just like to say that I don't want to get in a situation where we are dictating to the school board, but I do feel comfortable with the idea of supporting this group out here. And I want to do that in a way that makes sense, but at the same time, we don't cut off our nose to spite our face. So, your resolution would be what?
Well, what I think, I think we've got someone that's going to be able to cover all this.
Okay, let's hear it.
And that's this. I'll move to adopt a resolution opposing state-issued COVID-19 vaccination mandates, and model it very closely after the City of Citrus Heights' resolution regarding the same subject.
Okay, and you want to define more of that, Buzz? So, everybody understands what we're doing here?
Yeah, we want to go down a few pages in this.
Give us a brief summary of it.
I think that probably the best thing to do is probably scroll down to page, what page are we looking at? There's three sections.
Okay, give us the one that struck your fancy. That way, we're all clear on what we're doing here.
There we go.
I don't want any misunderstanding.
Yeah, the Citrus Heights' resolution. I want to give everybody a minute to read it, and...
Want to read it for us?
I can.
Richard, please.
Whereas every citizen who wants a vaccine possesses the right to obtain one. Whereas people have the right to refuse vaccination based on religious, medical, or personal reasons. And every medical intervention required, requires informed consent and the right of refusal, including the COVID-19 vaccine. And whereas the City Council desires to express its support for the rights of individuals and families living in our community to direct their own health futures, now therefore bid resolved in order, and I'm reading verbatim, okay, that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights. Number one, City Council encourages people to make an informed decision, including discussions with your family doctor or primary care physician, assess risks, and make the best decisions for themselves and their families, including the right to determine if they should receive the COVID-19 vaccine. Section two, the City Council encourages families to voice their position and concerns regarding mandates for students to be vaccinated or wear a mask. And by the way, I understand that's becoming an issue, and that certain government entities really don't like, and even the notion of having you come out and talk about this tonight. I'm not here, but in other places. I think that's regarding another topic that we have tonight. The City Council supports all employers, including private sector. And the city council supports all employers, including private sector, education, public agencies, including, again, verbatim, the City of Citrus Heights, to allow employees the choice as to whether or not to be vaccinated. And that's the meat of their resolution.
I haven't read that, counsel. Do we have any major problem with any of this? Okay, now, in one moment, out there, this is what we can do for you. Does it sound reasonable? Okay, that's what we're going to do then. We're going to, listen, I'm all hard, but at the same time, we have perimeters too. You know, we've got certain boundaries we can't cross. We can't dictate the other agencies, but we will support you 100%. But we do it in a way that covered our own butts, too, okay? Just be honest about it. All right, so, Mr. Swift, accept your...
We got a comment here.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just going to read you some comments that were provided via the go-to meeting.
Okay.
First comment.
Hold on, was that after or before the end of?
During this discussion, while you were reading this and talked about.
So, basically, public comment was closed on this item.
Okay.
So, in order to hear any further public comments, you'd have to reopen the public comment section, which would allow anybody, again, to speak on this. You cannot limit it.
I think we're good to go. Let's go. Give me the comment. I mean, give me the, make the...
Again, the motion is to, I don't know, you go up again there.
Okay, just a minute. We have, just a minute. Let's reopen it again and let everyone know. Everybody's going to have their opinion, so let's give it to them.
Okay, so, there were comments provided on the go-to meeting. First one, don't hide behind the school district. Make your own resolution for what the city stands for. The next comment, I believe Danielle is asking for a resolution similar to what the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors passed. Please protect our town and not concern the school district's agenda. The resolution would indicate that the city would not impose a vaccine passport to shop, eat, and attend events. I believe the city should adopt their own resolution. Another comment, I agree, keep it separate. It does not need to be joint. The city should adopt their own resolution. Another comment, I believe the city should also adopt their own resolution. And everybody's saying, yes, 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 awesome. And that is what Danielle is asking for. This resolution, and the last comment provided, is this resolution needs to protect our individual rights and freedom of choice, and the city council is required by the Constitution to protect those rights.
Okay, we're going to close it again, go back to where we left off.
Okay, let me reiterate the motion. The motion is to adopt a resolution opposing state-issued COVID-19 vaccination mandates and model it closely after the City of Citrus Heights resolution regarding the same topic.
Okay, let's have it one more time, please.
I moved to, I moved to adopt a resolution opposing state-issued COVID-19 vaccination mandates and model it closely after the City of Citrus Heights resolution regarding the same topic.
Okay, anybody got heartburn with that?
Am I close?
No heartburn? We're going with it. Okay, so, I would move, do we have a motion? That's our motion. Do we have a second?
There's a motion.
Motion, a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, all is in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Good luck.
So, that resolution will be brought before you at the next meeting.
Very good.
Consideration.
I just want to say that I love the fact that you guys got together on this and did what you did. It's wonderful. And, you know, we had comments earlier about a community. We are, we are definitely a community. And it's because of individuals like yourselves, we have this community. I only wish you'd spend more time thinking about some of the stuff we're doing in this town once in a while. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Feel free to stay for the other topics we're talking about. They're important to this city.
Yeah, hell with that.
All right.
Here we go.
Just saying.
We're still on the subject of government overreach.
I'm sorry. I'm just...
We're going to mandate that you not stay.
I don't know.
All right, let's move on to item number eight. Item number eight, consideration request for Mayor Alves to adopt a resolution supporting the protection of the First Amendment rights and promoting free and open discourse. All right, comments, gentlemen?
So, this, I'll just provide a...
Go ahead.
...report. This item was brought up by Mayor Alves at the last meeting, and we received a consensus from council to add it to this agenda, which was on November 1st. We requested this item, support First Amendment rights be added to the agenda for discussion. Councilmember Swift supported the item, and council provided this consensus. The sample resolution was shared by Mayor Alves, and so, this resolution is attached. And I don't know if you wanted to review it, Mayor, or if you want me...
I don't, you can.
Okay? So, this resolution is to declare policy that the United States Attorney General Merrick Garland should withdraw his memorandum dated October 4th, 2021, in which he declared that the United States Department of Justice is, quote, "committed to using its authority and resources to discourage," unquote, "public discourse" that it deems to be, quote, "threats against public servants," unquote, and to, quote, "prosecute them when appropriate," unquote. The memorandum, implementation of the memorandum will chill the First Amendment rights of our constituents to engage in free and open discussion of public issues, and it is a misuse of federal power in an area traditionally governed by state and local authorities. We are not afraid of open discourse over issues of concerns before our agency and do not want or need the heavy hand of federal law enforcement to intervene in that discourse. Whereas the First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees to all Americans the right of freedom of speech and the right of the people to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. These rights are exercised daily before our agency through regular communications by our constituents with our members at public meetings, letters and emails to our members, and one-on-one contact consistent with state law. As elected officials, we learn from this free and open discourse that even when we disagree with the message, it is essential to good government. Whereas the National School Boards Association, NSBA, recently sent a letter to the White House stating, "National School Boards Association respectfully asks for federal law enforcement and other assistance to deal with the growing number of threats of violence and acts of intimidation occurring across the nation." The NSBA offers no proof of growing number of threats of violence and acts of intimidation. Communications by our constituents on issues of interest to this agency seldom if ever rise to the level of criminal misbehavior, and local law enforcement is more than capable of dealing with problems if and when they arise. Whereas in response to the NSBA letter, Attorney General Garland issued the memorandum, which declares in recent months that there has been a deserving spike in harassment, intimidation, and threats of violence against school administrators, board members, teachers, and staff who participate in the vital work of running our nation's public schools. The Justice Department has offered no proof that such harassment, intimidation, and threats of violence have occurred in numbers that justify federal intervention. Nevertheless, the memorandum further declares the department takes these incidents seriously and is committed to using its authority and resources to discourage these threats, identify them when they occur, and prosecute them when appropriate. In the coming days, the department will announce a series of measures designed to address the rise in criminal conduct directed towards school personnel. Although the memorandum acknowledges, as it must, that spirited debate about policy matters is protected under the Constitution and makes no attempt to define what behavior qualifies as spirited debate and what constitutes criminal conduct that it plans to prosecute. Accordingly, when our constituents engage in public debate, they act at their own peril. That federal law enforcement will deem what they regard as an exercise in free speech to be a prosecutable offense. This will deter some constituents from participating in the open debate in which we are committed. Whereas General Garland is proceeding on a path that will imperil the free speech rights of our constituents. In addition to the constitutional guarantees of free speech and assembly, we deem it essential that our constituents remain free to speak their minds because the freedom, the free exchange of ideas helps us to govern better. The threat of federal law enforcement to intervene in what they perceive as threats of violence and acts of intimidation undermines the open dialogue that we need to govern. If even one of our constituents is dissuaded by the heavy hand of the federal government from openly expressing that person's views, it is one too many. I will go ahead and skip the next few paragraphs because it's probably...
What it boils down to is this.
So, yes.
What it boils down to is that the Department of Justice, in this organization's opinion, has stated that they have an overreach and trying to silence the opposition from parents at these board meetings. I read the article, and I belong to the group, actually, and the bottom line is I agree with them. I think this is crazy. People should have a right to express their opinion, whether you like it or not. And for anyone in government who would think that that's wrong, I got a problem with that. And I think this council would agree, I would pretty much agree with, think that they would agree anyway. And having said that, I'd like to get a motion and then get this thing passed and get moving on. Do we have that motion?
Yeah, I move that we make a resolution and we actually adopt the resolution that has, that Dominique has read. I know it doesn't sound like the most professional sounding motion, but...
Only because I finish it.
Yeah, as written. Let's go with that, as written. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, for me, just remind, before motions are made, the best practice is to have public comment before any motions are made.
Oh, gee, I'm glad you reminded me of that. Okay, is there anyone out there who would like to comment on this item? If so, please come to the podium and give us your opinion. You have five minutes.
It won't take five minutes. I just want to say thank you. You guys are on a roll tonight. This has been like, this is wonderful. It fills my heart with joy and it, you know, reinvigorates me as an American, so thank you.
There's a few of us left. Thank you. All right, is anyone else in the audience like to come up and comment? Doesn't look, well, here it goes.
This is a rhetorical question. Sean Strowman, Yosemite Avenue, you probably know me by now, but what the hell is Attorney General Garland doing?
We have no clue.
This is like such a reach that it makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. So, I applaud you guys for bringing this before us. And I second what the other gentleman said. I mean, this is democracy. You know, this is, this is what old George and Thomas Jefferson and John Adams, what they debated about over 250 years ago. Basically, standing up to the British and saying, "No, we're about freedom. We're about life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? I see no one coming up real soon here. We're going to go to the phones and the internet.
Is there anyone on the line that would like to make a public comment?
Nobody. Now, Councilman Swift, would you proceed, please?
Yeah, by the way, I was going to, one quick note. I know that this council actually supports the concept of this because that actually speaks to item B of the resolution that we just agreed to adopt in the last, in the previous topic. So, yeah, I think we, I'd like to move to adopt the resolution supporting the protection of First Amendment rights and promoting free and open discourse. And I'd like to have that resolution be the sample resolution that is along with this topic tonight.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second. We have a motion. We have a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. We will move to item number nine, consideration request for Mayor Alves to discuss SB 9 and whether the City of Escalon supports an initiative from California cities of local control to return local zoning control to the cities. Staff?
Once again, provided by the mayor at the last meeting and supported by the council, SB 9 increases density in single-family zones. And the city had submitted a letter back in August through the League of California Cities to our Assembly Committee on Local Government, as well as the league, strongly opposing this legislation, which requires cities and counties to ministerially approve without condition or discretion housing development containing two residential units on an individual parcel in single-family zones, and also approve urban lot splits, thus creating two independent lots that may be sold separately. I have attached the letter that we provided back in August where we asked for certain amendments to be provided to us, one of them being that they not apply this to populations of cities under 15,000, as well as some other items that we listed in there. Ideally, as much as we've discussed, councils mentioned in the past, this legislation is a one-size-fits-all that's been implemented statewide. However, doesn't fit how Escalon is operating and what we see for our community. So, that letter was submitted to the league. The next attachment was a coalition letter that was sent to Governor Gavin Newsom on September 10th of 2021. And this was a letter which included 241 other cities on the letter, writing to request that he veto SB 9. And we have the listing of all of the cities that were in support of that. Lastly, the request was from the California Cities for Local Control. We did pass a resolution related to them about a year ago in support of local jurisdictions trying to maintain local control and wanting to have local control. So, now, they wanted to move forward with this sample resolution for a tripartisan land use initiative. And that resolution has been attached, along with some information that was provided on their group, Our Neighborhood Voices, and what's available on their website. And so, the sample resolution is included, which basically opposes state taking over control of local governments and trying to restore local governments to maintain their own jurisdictions in accordance to their values and interests.
That's SB 9, and there's another one in there, too. Was it 10?
SB 10.
And there's also another one, but he told me, and I can't remember what it was, there was another one that was a lot more aggressive, and he told me, this gentleman I spoke with, and I'll find out more about that later. But the bottom line is, not only do they take away your development and how you decide how you want to do it, they also take away your fees. We don't get any money.
Correct.
So, here we are, going to run a town with a lot more impact and no cash. Isn't that convenient?
I have a comment. So, I've actually done some research on SB 9 and SB 10 personally. And so, what it does, to be clear, is it allows for more easy splitting of a lot so that you can develop on that lot. The reasoning behind it is because there's a housing crisis in California. People can't afford homes. And so, the idea is that if people who own land can split the lots and build, you know, residential homes on there, it will help alleviate the housing market. And what SB 9 and 10 have done, to my knowledge, is they've essentially, yes, they've sort of removed the local control of it, which is the part I do have an issue with. The thought, though, is that it's going to streamline a process where, we've talked about building granny flats in this town, and there's people that have more property. And if they want to put and somehow, you know, find a way to build a granny flat for their family to stay in town or they can get rental income, is not a bad thing. So, I don't believe that SB 9 and 10 are entirely bad, and I'm not fully against what they do. I still need to educate myself on it. But that being said, I'm not a fan of their trying to take away local control and what cities can do as far as their own zoning. I don't agree with that.
All right, thank you, Councilman Crumby. Now, do we go out here and ask for some more opinions? Let's do it. Anyone out there in the audience, would you like to come up and speak on this matter? And by the way, I differ with the description just given. My understanding is that this situation is going to allow people, for example, to go next to your house, buy the house, bulldoze that house, and they can put up the four units on that house, on that property next to yours. That's kind of what I'm not going to, I don't think is a great idea. If you want to destroy a community, that's how you do it. You start building multiple buildings right next to residential homes, and you're going to just love that. And by the way, they aren't going to be any cheaper, so as far as affordable housing, that's a misnomer. There's no way. These homes will cost just as much to rent, will be just as high. There's no, it's not a good deal for anybody. If you want development, you're going to have to find the right venue for it, and I haven't seen that come up real soon here because it just, the cost of building is extremely high. So, until we figure when the state can quit mandating putting sprinklers in houses, electric chargers in your garage, and all the things that they want to keep added to these new homes, we're not going to have affordable housing. That's as simple as that. So, if you want simple housing, we need to get back on the local bandwagon and get some of these officials to understand that, hey, you can't have it all and have affordable housing, too. Okay, anyone online would like to speak or on the phone? Okay, anyone online would like to speak on the phone? And it doesn't seem like, go ahead. Somebody's placed them up.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, this is Kirk Cale. Yeah, Eddie, I completely agree with you there, that the idea that this is going to create affordable housing is asinine. I mean, it's just complete backwards thinking. You know, the first element that spoke, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but I agree with you. I don't think that, you know, a person should, you know, not be allowed to build like an in-laws quarters or something like that. I mean, that's, you know, that increases the community in a sense, you know, bringing in an elderly or something like that. And I don't have any problems with that, and I think most people wouldn't either, but I think the problem is, is like Eddie was saying, is, you know, are they going to allow you to, you know, where there's, you know, there's a large lot with a tiny house, you knock that down, you put up this multiplex, you know, and you start doing that sort of a thing? I just can't, can't agree with that, and I don't see the people of Escalon agreeing with that either. Yeah, that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so it brings us back to discussion here, gentlemen, on this item, whether we're going to go ahead and move forward on this or not. So if we are, we need a motion.
What are we, what are we voting on right now?
I'd like to ask some questions.
Go ahead, ask away.
In this 200 and some odd list of cities that have been involved with this, is there any discussion of, even though they're putting this SB nine out there, that they've found some interesting ideas of how to change some of our building code, per se, to maybe limit or eliminate some of this possibility? There's some very creative folks out there, and there's 200 and something cities that are on this list. I'm just curious if anybody's mentioned anything with building codes that we can amend to kind of help support this cause and reduce slash eliminate this possibility?
I can answer a little bit about that. There's been a huge pushback to SB nine. So it's only been one year. In effect, there is discussion of an actual initiative being put on the ballot to repeal SB nine. The scuttlebutt I heard is it's actually really close to actually getting enough to be on the ballot to repeal nine, which would also mean that the legislature is going to be scrambling to modify SB nine so it doesn't die completely. So we're all kind of predicting that there's going to be some modifications to it. And of course, the continued attempt to just repeal it altogether, but there is movement in this regard.
So D'Avila is opposing it? Everyone? I mean, there's 200 and some cities. The City of Los Angeles City Council said flat out, no.
Right. So there's movement on here as to, we could expect some changes on this.
So what we're looking at right now specifically, the initiative from the California cities, the current initiative is the sample resolution. Am I to understand that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that was submitted by Torrance Council member?
Yeah, it was modeled on the City of Redondo Beach. Because the other resolutions, I think, asked, were a few, you know, a month or two ago, asking the governor to veto it. Well, he didn't veto it, of course.
It's too late for that.
Right, so that's why I want to make sure.
Yeah, just examples to provide on this.
Right. All right. So, any more questions before we move on this?
I just wanted to provide a little additional information.
Sure.
And the item that Councilmember Crumich was talking about is the recent accessory dwelling unit regulations that were updated, which is separate from SB nine.
Right, that's grand law.
And has lessened the restrictions and taken away some government control.
Right.
Accessory dwelling units, which are assumed to be affordable because they're smaller, and then they provide a max size that you could stay under where you don't pay fees, and then if it's over 750 square feet, you would pay fees.
Right.
SB nine is that, is that legislation where it increases the density, where you could potentially build up to four units.
Bingo.
Two sets of duplexes, those type of items in residential neighborhoods. And that's why a lot of people have issues with them, because it could go on vacant lots that we have throughout town.
Right.
And there is no feedback. It doesn't matter how your neighbor feels, none of those.
Yeah, and that's totally wrong.
Single-family residential allowing for this multi-use.
Totally wrong.
The city has no ability to deny that.
That's right.
And that's why we have to do what we're doing now to hopefully get this thing turned around. All right.
There is, there are certain restrict, I'm sorry.
No, there are restrictions that cities can impose.
There are some restrictions, and it does have to be a certain size.
Yeah.
But a lot of the control that we had is gone.
Absolutely. We want it back. Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the Escalon City Council supports the current initiative from the California cities for local control to return local zoning control to the cities.
Absolutely.
I have a little discussion. Hang in there, Eddie. We're going to get through it.
Come on now, it's okay.
Don't worry, we'll get you in bed by 9:45, okay?
I would hope so.
So, this is one thing where you've got to think critically about this. This is an easy thing to say, the states passed SB nine and 10 and Gavin Newsom, we hate him, and so we're going to say, no. It's not necessarily, we're losing local control, but a property owner is gaining control. They can now do more with their property and not have to go through the city's regulations. Okay, so I want to make that distinction. I think it's important. Also, voting on this without fully understanding the SB nine or SB 10, I think, is irresponsible. We've just gotten a little snippet of it. All the research I've done, I've watched lots of videos and actually tried to read things, it's very confusing. And I think at this point, we don't need to just jump on a bandwagon. I mean, okay, so LA is opposing it, so we oppose it. I just think, one of these things, it would be irresponsible to vote on something we don't fully understand, and just to make this kind of gut-wrench, you know, decision on something we don't fully understand, I think it's irresponsible.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. Do we have a motion, second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstained.
Very good. Okay, so we have a four and one abstention, and so it passes.
And so this, this item would be drafting that resolution using the sample that was provided and bring it before council for approval. And so at that time, we can provide that additional information on SB nine and 10 and give you that, that additional information to be able to...
Thank you.
Support whether you want to move forward on the resolution.
Very good. I appreciate staff's help here. Okay, Council of Communications, Crumich. Councilman Crumich, would you please go?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Alves. I wrote some few notes I'm going to go down on. In regards to comments brought up about the skate park, I think that we need to understand, and I'm not going to go lengthy into it, we've done something very simple. We've taken an idea that's gotten a lot of feedback, we've assigned a budget to it, and that's where we're at. So I don't think people need to get all up in arms about it one way or the other. At this point, we're still in the exploratory phase, and we're trying to decide, you know, what the next step is. We're trying to bring a skate park to the community so the children can have another place to play. It's, you know, boils down to that. There's very interesting these maps that our city, our county supervisor brought up. And if you look at how map B, you know, lumps us in with Tracy and Rippon, I think that's an interesting thing when you consider the push and who would get more control over this, this community. I think that's an interesting thing to look at. So those maps were very helpful. Thank you. Let's see here. And then, okay, finally, yeah, great discussion again on the mandates, what we can and cannot do as a city, and so I'm really happy with the result there. And I appreciate everybody that showed up and spoke and trying to claw back a little bit of that liberty. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Crumich. Councilman Swift?
Yeah, I just, not too much to say tonight, other than, yeah, it was one of those nights where everything that we discussed seemed to have a certain theme to it, and of course, this, the nice things seem to be the, you know, how we perceive things as government overreach. And I don't know if there's just a lot of people didn't bother, you know, in this state to take civics in high school or what, or understand that we're a nation ruled by law and we're a nation where, you know, when you air your air on the side of caution of freedom or what. But it just seems that there's an awful lot coming down from the state, and tonight's a pro example of it, where, you know, in a free society, you really, as much as you want to, there's only so much you can do, be it a vaccine, or be it imposing financial regulations, or any other kind of regulations on a people. There's only so much, in my opinion, that you can do in a free society. And obviously, many people disagree with this opinion. Thankfully, tonight, most of us here don't agree with, don't disagree with the opinion that, you know, when in doubt, freedom trumps, freedom trumps all. So, that's all I have.
Councilman Bell.
Yeah, just trying to keep it brief. We've had a lot of good discussion tonight. Again, reiterate what my father actually said, great Father, Veterans Day parade, good turnout at the barbecue. We can always have more, of course, but great meals, great people, got a great raffle. Encourage everybody that didn't show up this year to show up next year. Looking forward to Christmas on Main coming up in a few weeks as well. It's right around the corner, so, yeah.
Oh, wait, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Council want to be, well, because the next meeting is December, like, the second or whatever.
Jump on it.
Or for A, council want to be in the parade?
Of course.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
Is that even a question, Robert?
Well, come on.
We should try to get an open vehicle, Robert, so if we're going to throw out candy, which I would.
I have an old trailer I'm going to have you guys.
Very good. Thank you very much.
And support for map A.
Map A.
Anything but B. Oh, my lord.
Map A keeps us with other like-minded small towns.
No, I would agree, A or even...
Or C.
Or the other ones.
Yeah.
Even the last one would be fine. Yeah, that's good.
But that's all I've got for tonight.
That's it? All right. Pro Tim, Gerald.
Yeah, real good discussion tonight. It's good listening to the community step up and voice their concerns. That's, that is democracy in action right there. So it's nice to see that they took the time to come down here, express themselves. And if Attorney General Garland's memo was any part of that, they might have been, you know, accused of some sort of terrorist activity or been investigated for showing up and voicing their opinion about something. So it's good to see that. We have to remember that we are elected to represent the community, and the community is who we work for. And we do our best to try and represent their desires and their concerns and try and implement those things into the actions that we take here. So seeing that was, it's always refreshing to get a good turnout at the meetings and have people really express things that they're concerned about. Hopefully, that will continue. I've taken the oath, sworn oath, to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California for the last 30 years multiple times, and I take that oath very seriously. The Constitution is the law of the land, is absolutely what we are to support and defend. And I take that very seriously, and it's nice to see it in action, and we're taking steps to try and protect that. So, very well done. That being said, most of you know that I'm a prosecutor. Recently, I was promoted to the number two spot at the Stanislaus DA's office. I'm now the Assistant District Attorney. Along with that promotion, my boss, District Attorney Ms. Fladiger, announced that she would not be seeking reelection. So I've been asked to run for the District Attorney spot in Stanislaus County. So in consultation with our city attorney and the mayor, my, I will be stepping down from the council effective after the meeting on December 6th. So I have to relocate in order to be eligible to run for the District Attorney spot. So I have to move out of the jurisdiction of the city council. By doing so, I will not be eligible to serve on city council, so that will be an open seat. And the council will have options that they can consider. But it's been an absolute pleasure serving this community, and this is not an easy decision for me to make. A lot of discussions with my boss about timing and what my options were. But at this point, it is my career and it is my obligation to at least make the move and attempt to succeed her in that position. So I appreciate the time on the council, and I hope this council continues on with the good work that they've been doing. Again, listening to the community and trying to incorporate the community wishes into all of the decisions that we make up here and try and serve them to the best of our ability. So I will see you December 6th.
Hey, we'll go from there. Nobody? Come on. The only one? That's all he said, man. No way.
And just to follow up with that, so the council understands, there will be a 60-day, because of the time that Mr. Legere has been on the council, actually, the time that's remaining for his term, the council will be appointing a replacement until the next election. And we all, the council will have 60 days to do that. So staff will put on the agenda, replace, now that Mr. Legere has announced, announced the date, we're allowed to start discussing his replacement and what this city council, who would they want to appoint? So it'll be on further agenda. Unfortunately, there's not too many agendas because left before the 60 days run because Thanksgiving and then Christmas and New Year's. So there might be a need for a special meeting in the future for the actual appointment. But just to give you a heads up, it'll be on the future, the next agenda.
So does that affect our election cycle to replace Mr. Legere here? Is it a two-year instead of a four-year?
So, so what happened?
So we have two and three continued, or is it going to be now like four and one?
It does not affect the cycle because what happened is the appointment is only to replace that position until the next election.
Okay.
And then that person's being elected just for the remainder of his term.
Okay.
Gotcha.
To keep his, okay, that's what I was, okay.
So next election, we'll have four seats, so three for a four-year, one for a two-year.
One for a two-year.
There you go. All right. Anybody, anything else?
That's it.
Good job. All right. We talked a lot about government, government tonight. Hey, it's a grind, and we feel really resentful when they do things we don't like. Unfortunately, government is a nessa, nessa evil. That's what I look at it. We need it whether we like it or not, but at times, there's times we like to get rid of it. But we got to keep that in mind. I mean, it's a tough balance. The car show's coming back, and it'll be September 10th of next year, for all those who like car shows. Lions Club is regrouping and getting some new help, and we're going to put it on again. We've given over $350,000 to the graduating seniors for the car show, and we want to continue that legacy on as much as we can, and hopefully with the new members, and we're going to be able to do that. Christmas on Main, you're going to get the vehicle or whatever it is.